At home, a special budget meeting of 2026 order is due November 24th. The 2026 budget meeting will occur over the following dates and times. November 24th to 25th from 10 to 1 on Wolf Island. And December 2nd to 2025th of 1pm to 4pm on Vallet. We begin this gathering by acknowledging and celebrating these tradition, the land as gathered, a gathering place of the first peoples and their ancestors who are entrusted to care of the earth since time immemorial. We do so respecting both the land and the indigenous peoples who continue to walk with us through this world. Today, the Council for Frontiers Islands is committed to working with indigenous people and all residents to pursue a united path of reconciliation. Isarian Declaration of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. Seeing none. Purpose of this meeting, the first would be the finance report number FN018-25-2026. Wolf Island Community Groups Funding Request. And I'll hand that over to Jesse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the first report today is just to go over the applications we received for community grant funding on Wolf Island. As for Paul on council meeting on October 14th, 2025. Council approved community grant allocations for 2026. It was $25,755 for Wolf Island and $9,690 for Howe Island. Again, the purpose of this is to provide a grant for groups of the community that were either not-for-profit or registered charity organizations operate within the geographic boundaries of the County Frontiers Islands and then offer services or hold events that benefit the community of Frontiers Islands. So in the report today, I've outlined the groups that had funding requests. If a group received funding last year, I also noted what they did receive last year, so we have that for reference. We do have a couple of groups here that are new requests this year. There's also a couple of groups that request funds last year that have it this year. So just to note, the 2025 funding received doesn't add up exactly what we paid just because I didn't include groups that didn't have a request for this year. So without further ado, we do have a couple of presentations today for groups who have presented the funding request letters. I believe first up, we have the Wolf Island Community Medical Clinic. Sheila McConville is here just to seek her letter. Again, just to go over the format, same with last year, groups have five minutes just to kind of present the request, followed by any questions council might have.
Can you just note that it will Sunday the off-season first, but it will be the community.
Okay, okay, sorry.
One minute to go.
Yeah.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning. As I outlined in our funding request class, this is our annual funding request for support from the township to mitigate the costs of running a community medical clinic. So I just wanted to tip in some of the things that we've accomplished over 2025 with the support of the township. We pushed forward with the township and the family, and ultimately, we've got a suit for getting an exception from the Minister of Health to designate Wolf Island as the local community. So we want to continue with the support of Vanessa and Debbie Miller to push that agenda and find out what are the good things we can do to bring attention to that matter from the Minister of Health. We have also added services, so the VLM had been on from Wolf Island. We were able to replace them with a registered nurse who specializes in foot care, and her name is Rosa Hesse. So she has been seeing patients at the clinic, and she sees approximately 20 patients a month. And she's here twice a month to see those patients. So we've had very good feedback about the level of services which she provides. And so that's very good. Secondly, we added a purely mobile dental hygiene. Ash Apeck is the head of that business. So she offers a different kind of service. She is set out to do dental hygiene remotely, so she is now operating in a medical clinic. A few times per month, she looks at appointments. She will also go to family homes and do dental hygiene there. She was indicating is especially helpful for children, so they're not going into this sort of scary dental office for dental hygiene. And so we've had very good feedback about her support as well. So the balance of our funding comes from individual donations and from the Wolf Island Classic Race that happens in July, which we had the highest attendance participation this year as the race than we've ever had in the past. So much so, I think we overwhelmed the capacity of the area with passengers. So some people didn't actually make it over for the race. So communication is key for people moving in Kingston. You can't just take unlimited people on to come over. So do you have any questions?
Okay, the answer is questions.
No questions. I think you guys do a great job of trying to keep it alive. I said full-time guy, keep it. Thank you.
Officer Jablonecki?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I should have something you guys do. I'll hand us for you guys.
Thanks. Council Saunders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Congratulations on the work you're doing. I support this, but my basic question is, what additional services could you provide if you provide them online?
Well, I think we're well-funded. What we're going to focus on right now, because I think the achieving of remote destination is going to take some time. So what we want to focus on now is having a nurse practitioner and lock-in clinic to support the residents of the island, as was done in the past. Because I think that would provide at least an interim measure for health nurses. It would be our intention to fund that ourselves so that it doesn't cost the residents anything to go to a lock-in clinic. Because there's several nurse-led practitioners clinics in Kingston. And in the general, they take things as well as the basic to get services. So we're looking at, can we cover that cost to say, how to have a lock-in clinic for both the resident's to go?
And can you fund that? Are you going to ask for council funds for this?
No, I think it'll be at least for the first year. We're going to, we've kind of done it throughout budget on how we do that. And the other thing we're working on this year is to put in a generator in the clinic. So we've already utilizing some of the support from the township and our own fundraising. We've put in a second electrical panel to, which is the first step new for the generator. And then our intent for the generator is to mitigate risk in the clinic because it operates with some of its own basement, which it has flooded in the past before some of those. And we have a lot of assistive devices in the basement that we lend out to residents to avoid the current costs for those types of things. And we also provide storage for the historical society for a lot of their materials and artifacts. So we don't want to have clay in that basement. But our secondary thought was, if we get a generator, we could be an additional one site in the event of sustaining power outage for residents on drive.
Thank you for the work. You're a physicist.
Congratulations on becoming more than.
Marking the answers. Again, I think, you know, we understand the issue you have on Wolf, first of all. First response is that, so again, anything we can do to assist in that dilemma? Should we try to attempt to something?
Council Ackley?
I'd just like to say you're doing a great job. It seems like you've got direction and you're following forward fastly and efficiently by the sounds of it, and you've got goals that you want to do. And like the deputy mayor and board did set, that you've got a focus. Yeah, and if we can help, we can help.
Thank you. Why don't you get into our first? Tell another cool. The rural and remote visitation, in August, I was at a meeting hosted by several ministries. And it was so clear that our postal code now has assisted us. K0H2Y0, when there's a zero in the postal code, it is now recognized as being rural and ideally remote, but definitely rural. And not all the ministries have converted everything. However, there are several that have, and that's if you need contact information or getting leverage for that, it's there. That's a great point. We've made a great step in that direction. It's good. And it's so clear, and that is zero near, and I pointed, we're double not. So we are definitely rural. And as for the generator and that, it's great to hear that you've got a panel in place. How much are you missing on your generator project?
Well, the next step, the generator itself, is about $10,000, including installation.
Sounds like there might end up being a concentration of generators in that between the fireball movement, setting money aside for the seniors, and then also for medical clinic. Okay, good to know. All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, and the distribution. Council Hope?
No.
Council Jablonecki? Council Saunders? Council Ackley?
No comment.
Okay. And do we have a motion for this? No, not on the table, no. Okay, now we'll do the off-season funding requests presentation. We have somebody here from there.
Yeah, so we have James Street, and he's on the other side of the corner.
Okay.
Good morning, all. It's lovely to see you. I am wondering, is it possible for me to present a slideshow as a component of this?
Yes, they can usually share screens. We're getting nods from the assistant clerk.
Awesome. I will give this a shot. Just bear with me. My apologies. Let me try to get this up. Hmm, doesn't seem to allow me to share my screen. No matter, I will send my slides over to Jesse post-presentation. But I want to take this opportunity to introduce myself. My name is James Street. I am a resident of both Toronto and Wolf Island. But I currently reside in New York City, and I attend the Juilliard School in its dance division. So my aim in founding Offseason, which is incorporated as a not-for-profit federally under the name Canadian Collective Arts. My aim is to bring dance excellence and dance education to Wolf Island. So I graduated from Canada's National Ballet School in Toronto in 2023. But as I mentioned, I have long ties to the island. I've lived on Fifth Line Road and spent many summers here, spend weekends on the island quite frequently. And I also have some family heritage. Wilbert Weiss is my great-great-grandfather, and he was a Methodist minister around the turn of the 20th century on the island. So my goal in creating this organization is, as I say, to bring dance excellence and dance education to Wolf Island. And I aim to institute this at first through a two-performance presentation on July 24th and 26th, sorry, July 24th and 25th, 2026, featuring Canadian choreography. And it will be presented on the stage of Hotel Wolf Island. I'm already in talks with Chris Brown, and we have tentatively reserved those dates for the venue. Now, this performance aspect will comprise two performances. Our target numbers for audience attendance for each performance is 200 people. We are looking to implement $25 tickets for all non-islanders and a pay-what-you-can model for all islanders to ensure that this event is accessible. As an additional component, we aim to offer a masterclass series for all ages at no charge. This will be an informal event where anyone is able to come together and engage in dance just to benefit the community and, again, make people more aware of the transformative abilities that dance has. Now, for this funding request, I am asking for $5,000. This will support essential infrastructure, such as the stage modifications. It is imperative for the performing artists as a part of the performance component that they have marly flooring and a padded underlay on top of the concrete stage that the hotel offers. And we estimate this expense to be about $3,000. In addition to that, the funding will also help defray the cost of the venue rental, which includes the audio and lighting equipment, as I've discussed with Chris Brown. And for this part, we are asking $1,800. As the final 200, this will be insurance expressly for the aforementioned, so those stage modifications and the venue rental. Again, that brings the total to $5,000. Now, the benefits that I see to Wolf Island is a boost in local spending, both by attracting outside visitors to attend these performances and by providing a central event in Marysville to bring together local residents. Now, as we all know, Wolf Island is about equidistant from Toronto, Montreal, and Ottawa. So I also hope that the draw of dance performance at such a high caliber will attract day trippers and those who want to spend an evening on the island to attend this performance. We also see some social and community benefits, such as high-quality arts access, as I've mentioned, community engagement, and it activates the public space and allows Wolf Island to brand itself not only as a hub of immense community culture, but also of performing arts excellence. So in, for the sake of time, I'll leave that there. But I'm so excited to make all of your acquaintances more formally in person as soon as I can. And I am more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. Council Hope?
So would the stage modifications be permanent, or would that be renting something to put on?
Great question. So those would be modular additions that would go on top of the stage. They would be able to be dismantled at any time. And these, again, are, these ensure that dancers are able to dance without injury, because it's very difficult, I will attest, very difficult to dance on concrete. And I'm also in discussion with Chris Brown about whether we would share this cost. And he might take ownership of the modular components so that he's able to use them for performances outside of my scope.
Okay, the only other question is, you're hoping for approximately 400. Even if you get half that, that would be $25 for tickets. It's a part of your cost, like if you've got 200, that would be 5,000. So if you had the 5,000, would you be looking to pay a flat of it?
Of course. I, of course, want to ensure that everyone stands to benefit economically from this, as well as culturally. So would be more than happy to. I will say, given the considerations that I've made for adequately compensating teachers and performers and choreographers, because I aim to pay everyone as equitably as possible. I know that the ticket revenue will not be enough to cover all of these costs. So as best I can, I would love to pay you back. But I hope that even if I'm not able to do so financially, I'm able to do so by benefiting Wolf Island's general economy and by bringing more press to the island.
Thank you.
Council Jablonecki?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. James, as I curiosity, you said, the funding right to clean audio and light equipment. $800, you're going to do two shows, $900 to throw. Is this a continuing expense every year going forward?
Yes, it would be. So as I discussed with Chris Brown, those lighting and audio equipment rentals are part and parcel of his venue rental price. It would be on a day-by-day rental basis. So should this become a recurring fixture of the Wolf Island event scene? We would see that as an ongoing, as I say, day-by-day expense. But I would really love to see the reception of this first iteration and move on from there.
Okay, Council Saunders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. James said to bring this forward. The other councils have asked, already asked some questions, so I have no further questions.
Hey, Council Ackley?
I don't have any comment.
Okay, I have the practical comment. This is an outdoor venue. And what happens with wind and rain, et cetera? And that, can you, you know, backup plan? Are you thinking of using the arena up at the community center that actually has lighting and shade, potentially even wall? I'm not sure on that one. But.
Yeah, terrific question. So to just briefly touch on the ability of the outdoor stage to modify in the case of inclement weather. Chris Brown has mentioned that there is a tarp that would provide some minimal protection from any rain. Given the dates for the performances, I typically, based on what I've experienced on the island, those dates in July don't tend to be particularly windy. There's typically a low chance of rain. I would be very interested in continuing talks about using the arena perhaps as a backup venue. But given the Hotel Wolf Island's previous experience with presenting on that stage, I trust in their ability to, to protect dancers, given any weather. And I will also say, I will attest to this, dancers are notably resilient. And so any minor wind, anything that isn't too severe, we would be able to continue performing through it regardless.
So say there's an unfortunate torrential rain or strong blowing wind. Are you going to have a backup plan in place for this? An ultimate location?
Yeah, absolutely. So again, I am very interested in continuing to discuss the option of having the arena in reserve as a backup venue. And I will reach out to the township. My earliest ability to begin talk. Right, I do want to ensure best practice in case such weather should arise.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much for the presentation.
Madam Mayor, I may. We have the agenda published and out before we receive notification that Ms. Thomas would like to make a presentation on behalf of the Wolf Island Pharaohs in Blooming Gardens. I believe she's in the audience today, if council so wishes, to allow her to make her presentations during the. Now.
I was more just prepared to answer any questions that she had. Yeah, but to speak to the agenda and that, we just need a motion to put an addition on to the agenda at this point in time. Should have been done earlier and that included, but I think it's important.
If she wants to present, apparently, if anybody has any questions, she was more here just to answer, so.
Yeah, I didn't even see hers in particular listed on the agenda, just in the package.
No, that's what I'm saying. She, we were in discussions after the agenda had been published, so.
So that being said.
Yeah, too, Madam Mayor. So I think with the groups that are here presenting, I guess council can have discussions or, you know, if anyone wants to speak to that. But otherwise, I don't think we normally reread the letters. It's in the agenda, but the assumptions councils let them all back, yeah.
All right, so I'm going to ask councillors, Matt, if you have any questions regarding the Pharaoh cat group. Matt, the Wolf Island Friends of the Pharaoh. And we had the letters that had been submitted and asked. You know, we find any questions. But it's not on the official agenda. Council Hope, any questions?
I guess my question still, I was in fact the same thing. Where are we at? Where did we start with? How many Pharaoh cats did we start with? And how many do we have now? Or are we making progress?
We are making progress in that we have, as of today, since the 1st of October, we've been taking four a week. And because we've had to slow down in the summer, it was so hot this year, we just couldn't drop cats and leaving, sitting all night. And so we are, we're probably at about 710 right now. Now, as far as how many are out there, apparently, we keep seeing them and being told about them all the time. Somebody's saying it's the real, no real great end in sight, but.
Yeah, that's, that's my question. Like, it's not my, I just don't think it will reduce the Pharaoh cat population like, like it seems. I mean, it's probably some Pharaoh cats in my place, like all the barn cats. They're well-fed.
Well, people, you know, if they get in touch with her, he'll come and get your cats and take them and get them down. You know, we are fairly lucky on the island, but a lot of people that have a number of them in their barns, they secretly get some food and things, so. But, but they can, they can repopulate at a huge rate if you, if you don't get them under control. It's last year, I thought, I hadn't seen any just wandering across the road. And one night last week, I saw two just walking.
Okay, so that, any question that you have, any more questions for me? Okay, Council Jablonecki?
No, I know a few families helped out. I know you said you have 700 cats, you're vaccinated, so at this point, that's 700 less ways of retrieving those, I guess, so keep it up.
Yeah, and we're getting the shots of the, you know, getting baby shots.
Council Saunders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Is there any other form of funding?
A lot of donations. People have been very good with us. They're getting better all the time, usually. Yeah, and last year, we had a nice thing happen with the Taste of the Mills Vet. They would do as many cats as we wanted to bring on Saturday. I think we got 20 some cats, or we have a dozen, nothing. Which is a lot of money with one cat. But we do get a pretty good rate from the vet as well. It's not, you know, what you were either paying, but it's, but it's not cheap either. It's about $100 for, you know, just over $300 for them. So when we do four a week, we're talking $50. But we wanted to get these all done in the fall.
Thank you. Hey, Council Ackley?
Again, great job trying to keep it under control.
It's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work. I'm a cat lover, so.
Yeah. Yeah, they'll be those, set traps on Sunday afternoon and picks them up and takes them back to the barn. And then they take them over to the vet on Monday morning, and go back and get them when they're done. Yeah, it's, it's quite a bit of work. It's a lot of work doing the fundraising that we do, too.
Don't pick up my two, please.
Thank you very much for answering any other questions for that. And yeah, it does help to keep the cat population down, especially. Thank you. Okay, is there anybody here from Wolf Island early years? And are there any questions from the councillor or anything for anybody? Council Hope?
No.
Okay, Council Jablonecki? Council Saunders?
Thank you.
Council Ackley?
My question.
Okay, and I think that's the extent.
That's the one more. Blooming Gardens?
Okay, we've got somebody from Blooming Gardens here. Okay, we got somebody from Blooming Gardens here. Any questions, Councilor Holton?
My only question is, is that enough money?
Well, well, it depends. Jan and I were, we're going to try to recruit a couple of helpers this year, because it's just been Jan, Vic and I the last couple of years. And so we do, we've done, she's done a great job of advisory, she's got a lot of shrubs and perennials in there. They, she keeps the entrance to the gallery here, and we have stuff at the post office and at the museum, but it's. And again, it slowed down on the heat last year, too. And Mike knows, we live all the way, so I have to come back in just to water stuff, you know. And but and we, you know, we bring things from our own garden, libraries and stuff. We do have, and there's some confusion, Jesse, suggesting over the year before, because we did get a check in October of twenty four. And I don't know whether it didn't go through this procedure, because I know we didn't go through this procedure, so maybe it was something more casual.
Yeah, so the procedure changed for the twenty twenty five budget allocation, so yes.
Okay, that's.
And then that's why I only showed twenty twenty five allocations.
So we do, we did get that check, and we had that seven hundred eighty one dollars in the bank from that check from last year. So we'll be getting another three hundred, get some close to five. We hope to do some more here this this year, with the vote hopefully being that in village more, I think, too, so.
Okay, question there, if that's enough, and you've indicated it's enough.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, Councilor Jevon?
Thank you, love the colors, no, I love the colors, it's your left heart. Keep it up, please.
Okay, thanks. Councilor Saunders?
Thank you, Senator. What did you scroll across? Don't I see that? Cause you're purchasing.
Yeah, 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 I think I've got this bill there that I reimbursed from the bank account, I think I've got the bank account tax to the back of that. It was, we had, I think I sent, oh, here, I sent, I gave Jan a hundred and ninety nine dollars and thirty cents. And Home Depot and Fargo's, Fargo's business, and the post office, that is a little, but. You know, we can pretty well stay just under the five hundred. Depending on, if we get, we had talked about getting something done at the, at the medical clinic, too, especially if we get a physician there. We have to do a cleanup there, and we'll probably get some two shrubs, some perennials and things for in there as well, so. We did have that mess on the side there, that was a project a few years ago, but it's just a little mess. We shouldn't have done it. It wasn't, it wasn't.
So I guess my basic question is, you're all volunteers, you make great work. I come from the places, it shouldn't cost volunteers money out of their pockets. So I'm really asking, I guess, are you guys actually kind of fun with yourself, how much is your time?
Um, I would say no, I mean, to the point that if we needed some soil or peat moss or something, we'd bring it from home, but, you know. Because you don't want to be dragging it.
Thank you. Councilor Appleton?
Again, impressive job for for five hundred dollars, like, wow. I'm beyond impressed. My my wife spends more of that than a friend, yes. You need to come to my house.
Jan is really caring.
Impressive. Impressive.
Anyway, okay, yeah, thank you very much. Do you have a color pick for this? Summer coming?
No.
Okay, just a thought, and that could, a lot of places across Canada are doing red and white.
Yeah, I did that when I came last year.
There you go, I did it my first time, so just a thought.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Now.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, well, moved by Deputy Mayor Saunders, second by Councilor Holton, that Finance Report Number FN zero one eight dash two five twenty twenty six Wolf Island Community Group's funding request be received.
Hey, any discussion? The nuns, all those in favor? Here, and there. Okay, now we're at.
Yes. Yeah, I'll take this. So, sorry, Madam Mayor, Councilor Holton was asking if we voted to approve and I decided to.
We'll receive. But now we're going to twenty twenty six draft budget.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good morning, everyone. I would like to begin by thanking council and staff for coming together today for the initial review of the draft twenty twenty six budget. This process represents a collective effort, and I want to acknowledge the hard work of our staff in preparing a balanced and thoughtful budget that addresses both our operating needs and our capital priorities. As we look back in twenty twenty five, it was a productive and focused year for the township. We successfully completed several significant capital works projects and made key capital purchases that strengthened our infrastructure and supportive service delivery. These investments have positioned us well as we move into twenty twenty six. The draft budget before you continues to build on that momentum. It reflects our commitment to responsible financial management, sustaining essential services, and planning for the long term needs of our community. Throughout this budget, you will see an emphasis on sustainability, asset management, and maintaining the high standard of service our residents expect. The proposed budget strikes a careful balance, recognizing the financial pressures faced by residents and businesses while still making necessary investments to support growth, resilience, and sustainability. Today, we will review the highlights of the draft budget, including key projects, projected revenues and expenses, and the potential impacts on our tax rates. As always, we welcome your questions and feedback throughout this process. I also want to extend my gratitude to all staff members who contributed to this budget. Your dedication and hard work have been instrumental in ensuring we continue to move this municipality forward and remain on course. And with that, I will now turn the presentation over to our treasurer, Jessie Collins, who will walk us through the details of the twenty twenty six budget.
Thank you to you, Madam Mayor, I'm just gonna share my screen of, it should pop up on the TV and for any online viewers if they manage to film any. Thank you, thank you, Vanessa, for those opening comments, it's always good to kind of set the stage for the budget. So just to go over what we'll be discussing today, as the mayor pointed out, we do have two planned budget meetings, we have one today and then one next Tuesday at one P M. Today, we're gonna go through this, the high level overview of the budget and its impacts. We're gonna go through the general departments as well as the wealth departments. Once we get to the end of the wealth departments, we're gonna stop there. And then we'll just continue the discussion on the How Island departments next Tuesday. So again, as always, we just provide a brief background of just kind of the timeline. So new to this year, we always requested. Oh, a little left, yeah, I was looking for that. New to this year, we have the budget survey that we posted online on our social media pages on our website. Wouldn't be a budget meeting with those technical issues?
Can you go through yours? It's just disconnected, I'm gonna just upload.
Will they be able to see it online?
I think online.
Online, they're seeing it fine. It's just here on the TV.
Fortunately, I see a lot of laptops open here, so I think probably a lot of our people are online. Jessie, it must be you, because I was here early and she had this working just perfectly until you got involved.
It's it's the connection with the. Check them out.
Yeah.
But it's a bit.
Something better.
I don't know the one time card change there. That should disappear.
We're back on.
We're going to get rid of that. Oh, boy. Oh, there we go.
We're back.
Yeah. It's missing a meeting, there was still a question.
That's all, continue on.
So yeah, again, just to kind of start it off, we have the official formal survey, those all represented by us council. Again, we did see a lot of concern regarding the big three, where kind of emergency services varies in roads or transportation. The mayor made some good points, a few of those outside of our control. But we did read all the comments and tried to kind of fill a balanced budget, you know, based on some of the feedback we received. October thirteenth, we had council confirm community group, group funding. Management had a meeting in October twenty ninth to review the final budget sheets. And then make any changes that we needed. So we had the community grant application closed on November fourteenth, and then here we are today, November twenty fourth, with the first budget presentation. So I always just like to start off with the increases off of that, just so we know the context of everything and where we're working at, so. Overall, in this draft budget, the overall tax rate increase for the average household is about five point eleven percent or a hundred and thirty one dollars and three cents. How that reflects for Wolf Island is a four point nine eight percent increase or a hundred and ten dollars and thirty one cents. And for How Island, a five point three five percent increase or a hundred and fifty eight dollars and eleven cents. I know this is generally for council when we're kind of making decisions and kind of finalizing the budget. For Wolf Island, about twenty four thousand dollars would equate to one percent tax rate increase for Wolf Island residents. And it's about twelve and a half thousand dollars for How Island. So again, kind of as we do these budget processes, changes for How Island tend to have a much larger impact on the tax rate that is levied. So again, kind of a slide, one thing that we always look at with the budgeting is the Consumer Price Index or inflation. So typically for our budget process, we look at the month of August and see what the year over year inflation is for that month. In this case, it was about one point nine percent in August. The other thing we looked at is September, it was a two point four percent inflation increase. So we kind of split the middle a little bit, less on the conservative side, but applied kind of the two percent inflationary rate to our expenditures. So this kind of has impacts in two ways, one, we'll get into a bit more, but we did provide a two percent cost of living to a seller grid that has not yet been approved, but it's for the purpose of the budget, it's been worked in, and we applied a two percent cost of living to that. The other thing is we applied two percent increase to our operating expenses. So think about this as we have hydro or like off supplies or those items, things that we incur year over year. Across the board, we're still applying that two percent to make sure that we're keeping up with inflation. Again, I think it's kind of highly important to match inflation in those areas, because if you skip it one year, the next year, you know, you're four percent behind. And I think as we've kind of seen with some of these budgets, there's been some catch up that kind of significantly higher tax rate increases, so. Again, just want to point out, even sometimes, you know, there's larger factors or one time things that change with the departments. At a base level, for the things that we know are occurring every year, we have built in two percent into those numbers. So kind of this next section is just budget impacts of kind of these things that either have an impact on the budget or get impacted the sales. The one thing I like kind of summarizing is the debt. As with last year, we're seeing a decrease in debt as we had a few loans planned to finish in twenty twenty five, that are present in twenty twenty six. Ultimately, here in twenty twenty six, the CCD group loan finished in twenty twenty five, and then the How Island tractor loan also finished in twenty twenty five. So the difference is just down to three loans. There's a vehicle loan for Wolf Fire, I believe that finishes in twenty twenty seven. There's a senior housing loan, and then Wolf, Wolf Road is the greater loan. One thing to point out as well, this is the last year for the greater loan, so that will be done in twenty twenty six as well. Again, a lot of this decrease is just a decrease because we're no longer paying principal on those loans, but the up that twenty eight thousand nine hundred seventy one dollars, about twenty three hundred dollars relate to interest expense that we no longer have. We, I will speak to it more specifically. In the past, the way we've done our budget is a lot of the times the loan payment we've had covered by transfer from reserves. That's still in the budget a little bit, but just kind of at a high level, we made effort to have the loan payments funded by our taxation. If it's funded by our reserve, specifically here, the Wolf Senior Houses, we're paying up to point twenty twenty forty five. We can't fund it from reserve forever, we ran out of money, so we kind of took advantage of the budget this year to have that be included in the tax rate and not coming from reserves, which we, we know is not permitted. Again, when we get to those budget departments, I'll speak in more detail, I just kind of wanted to pass on kind of the high level thinking. Here, we have the balance of the reserves. So the current balance, that includes any twenty twenty five budget entry as well as any council resolution throughout the year. Oh, sorry, yes, I'll get myself on my good five second. Yeah, and if we do, then you have problems, I guess it is online, and I can let everyone know when I go to the next slide, I can make sure we're on the same page.
Will they have lunch?
Need to eat in the budget?
There's a page on her laptop, and there's a reason it will work better.
Yeah, so where's where it was going, issues in question?
That's a good, right, her laptop was working just on this.
Like, my sharing should only be, like, technically, it's just, it's still first grade, that's sharing.
Yeah.
People are on sharing the presentation from my laptop, so I try to, but there were some, either very strange points of this stuff. I sharing some of the, okay, he looks like he has a question, wait a second.
It's glitching, it's, it's the wire.
Yeah.
We need duct tape. Okay. Come on. Don't anybody move. Or the big jump.
Okay, locally, we're all good now. I'll continue on. Sorry, guys, that's just beginning the presentation. Um, so.
Please. You have some pressure, right? Good to do.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So again, kind of this resource side, the turn balance, you know, uh, based on twenty twenty five budget entries plus any council resolution. Uh, we have projected year and so plus deficit numbers. Uh, again, this was just taking um what we had as of kind of Q three and then uh just kind of projecting that out a little bit. Um, with the twenty twenty six budget entry, so anytime the budget you see a transfer to or from reserve. Um, that's all summarized on this table of where those transfers are going. Um, so again, uh, ultimately, we're at a point where this budget does um uh transfer more to reserves and then takes out. So the the reserves is still being built up. Um, I think this year might be a little bit less than last year, but again, keeping kind of the philosophy of uh the sustainability of the township. Um, the next slide here, and then um it's just the obligatory reserves. Um, so again, these are the amounts that we receive um that sit on our balance sheet as deferred revenue. Um, it's different from regular reserves is they have to be for kind of specific purposes. Um, and they have not yet been recognized as a net income or a profit. Um, so here we have the projected reserve balances at year end. Um, I've included the projected revenues that we're expected to receive. Um, this also includes our OSEP and CCDF slash gas tax funding. Um, as well as utilization, so that utilization is also represented in the budget of how much of those we're planning to use. Um, again, for this year, with the budget how it's worked out, uh, one thing to note is. Uh, this year, there is some utilization of development charges, uh, the bulk of which uh related to the bypass for the Wolf Island. Um, there's some parkland reserve utilization, so um. You would have seen in our financial statements, uh, as part of the planning department, uh, I think it was up in our most recent council discussion is we collect. Uh, fees for cash into a parkland when it comes to severances. Uh, so those monies must be kept in reserve and then they must be used specifically for capital projects for recreational purposes. Uh, so some of those funds have been used as well. Uh, again, uh, with the OSEP and gas tax, I would with the projected projects and what we're looking to do. Um, we do have us utilizing what's sitting in reserve and the twenty twenty six balances. Um, again, uh, that's just kind of presented in the draft budget to uh kind of complete the projects uh indicated by managers as priority. We'll try and maintain a lower kind of tax rate and use those funding amounts. This next slide here is the impact twenty twenty six weighted assessment values. Um, the weighted part here is there is uh certain ratios for uh groups where there's um the tax rate is limited, those are set by the county product. Um, those remain unchanged, but I just kind of wanted to give a definition there. Uh, the one thing I do want to note is uh for the budget process, we're given um projected uh twenty twenty six assessment values. Um, we have not yet received the roll books, so uh again, we're given a projected number by impact and I've used that in the budget. I just wanted to give one caveat is that these numbers might slightly change, uh, they might uh swing one way or the other. Um, usually with this budget process, we have today's meeting, next week's meeting, and then changes are then brought back to council. Uh, when that happens, I'll highlight any changes to these numbers. Uh, I just wanted to state at this point, they're not a hundred percent final, um, there has, there had to be some uh estimations. Uh, for this budget presentation today. So this tab, uh, this table is, I think, one that's uh been fairly common uh of the year. Uh, again, it does have a lot of information, um, so not going to spend too much time on it because we have a couple other tables that breaks it down a little bit more clear. Um, but ultimately, uh, if you're looking at this, it can kind of show you uh where the net operating amount that we're raising for each department as well as the net capital. Um, and those two together make the uh raised by taxation amount that goes into the tax rate. Um, kind of just moving on to the next tile, I've kind of broken it down so you can see by general Wolf and Howe. Um, the blue font is just instances where the change is less, so we're actually raising less taxation for those departments. Again, we're going to go department by department later on, so I'm not going to get into those changes. Um, I just wanted to have a high level summary for council so they can quickly see, you know, where the money's going. Um, and I mean, the quick thing I'll say is quite clearly more money being put into the roads department for both islands. Um, the little circle graph to the side was just to kind of show the split between the general departments, How Island and Wolf. Um, I believe this is almost unchanged from the allocation last year, I think, uh, How might have went nine one percent and in general might have gone down one. Um, but the the allocation stays fairly uh similar. Um, moving into this slide, so again, uh, some of the same information just presented a little bit differently, a little bit kind of to get the big picture for council. Uh, so this is sort of a township overall, and uh I think here kind of highlights kind of the philosophy in this budget. Um, with operating, I think we had, out of my presentations, uh, very kind of proud of the efforts of staff, we have the operating budget and we stayed on it. Um, I, and it's kind of reflected today that the net change and what we raise for operating uh is. Going up by a very kind of small amount, it's zero point one one percent. Um, again, I I think a couple of things we'll get into it. Uh, one is we did have an increase in the revenues on the operating side. Um, which kind of helped reduce the impact. Um, the other thing is there was kind of some large changes that we can get into. Uh, for example. Uh, we had changes to the uh cyclone program. Uh, and those kind of items, uh, they all kind of lead into us having kind of less operating costs. Um, when we look at capital, uh, again, uh, a couple of things to kind of point out, we do have overall a little bit of additional capital revenues. Uh, but kind of the big ticket item and what's really driving kind of the increase and kind of as we go today with council. Uh, you know, making questions or having decisions. Um, the impact on the tax rate ultimately comes down to how much we're spending on our capital projects. The one thing I did want to speak to today, um, again, uh. Ideally, everything can be settled, but where we're at is we do know in December, there will be a presentation on asset management plan for the township of Promont Islands. Um, what I can speak to today is that presentation will highlight there's a gap between what the township is spending on capital and what it should be spending every year.
Um, did you say February or?
I just, I meant this is, sorry.
No, you did say.
Okay, sorry. So this is, yeah, December this year, so it's kind of shortly. Um, so basically, that presentation is going to highlight, uh, there's a gap between what we're raising and spending on capital projects. Uh, and what we should be based on an asset management plan, which looks at all our assets and the cost to replace them. So a big part of this budget this year is to help us push us in the right direction. Um, to make sure that we are increasing our spending in capital. Uh, and having kind of as an aspect of that sustainability and the ability to, you know, cover the cost of our expenses. Uh, the one thing I will say today, this is just the draft presentation, so uh this isn't necessarily going to be aligned with the asset management plan, but it puts us in the right direction. Um, what we do know, I I can say at a bare minimum is that. We will, you know, that plan will state that we need to spend more on capital spending, uh, which this budget accomplishes. Uh, so again, uh, I think as as far as today, just kind of. That's kind of the big picture is the increase on capital spending to kind of close the gap on our infrastructure needs and what we raise for taxation. Um, again, uh, just to kind of quick level, this is more a high level summary, we'll kind of go by these departments. Um, looking here again, net operating is not, uh, that's the should have an increase, um, but that's in part because. Of uh additional revenue that's expected. Um, and with the general department, we did not propose any capital projects this year. Uh, Wolf Island, uh, the net operating is actually down a little bit. Um, again, uh, this um. Different variety of factors, uh, but ultimately, um, we had a decreased uh or. Yeah, ultimately, just a small decrease on the net operating side. Um, looking at the capital side again, uh, this is where we kind of see the significant swing. Um, where the net uh amount for capital has gone up higher. Our same thing at Wolf, we're not seeing too much increased activity on the operating side uh for writing factors I would get into with a more push for fat spending. Uh, for the How Island departments. Um, these two slides here, I think it was based on a suggestion that our mayor had last year is we had nowhere in our budget where we actually summarize all the capital projects clearly in one spot. Uh, so this have, again, we'll spend more time speaking if we're into those departments. Uh, this just summarizes all the current capital projects proposed in place for Wolf Island. Uh, and this slide here proposes all the projects for How Island. Again, and we will speak to those projects in more detail. Um, speaking again, just for a private summary, so a slide we always include is a summary of the salary and benefits. Um, overall, um, percentage wise increase, um. We see about three point two eight percent on the salaries, uh, but a much higher increase on the benefits. Um, and overall about five point eighteen percent. Um, again, just some high level things to get into, just because it might stand out, uh, why the How Island decrease. Um, there is kind of two major factors there is one in the budget last year, we included um just under thirty thousand dollars for on-call costs. Uh, the ferry service. Uh, that was approved in the budget, ultimately, uh, never took place um due to more consistent operations of the county ferry. Um, but we have not included that portion in the budget today. Uh, as well as there'd be increase decreasing salary benefits for the second operation as we go to curbside pickup. Um, the other kind of things I just wanted to speak to regarding salary benefits in the budget. Um, one, we do see the larger increase on the benefit side. Um, ultimately, we see the over thirty percent increase in the premiums we pay for our employee benefits, so this is our health, dental, life, short term disability. Um, the real, the main cause for this is. As we have a smaller employee base, we see much larger swings in our employee premiums when it comes to dental or health or drug. Uh, benefit costs, uh, one year with a lot of high claims, when we go for renewal, we get hit. Um, with, you know, based on the activity, there'll either be an increase, a decrease. Um, I believe in the twenty five budget, what they measured in twenty four, uh, led to kind of a decrease in the in the benefits in that sense. Um, but then we've seen a kind of swing completely in the other direction this year. So, um, again, that's kind of why we're seeing those faces there. Um, usually there is a process uh where we take our benefit plans to the market. Um, which again might be having an impact on the twenty seven budget. Uh, but again, for as far as the twenty six, uh, little to what we can do, um, we kind of get those increases from our provider. Um, the other thing I wanted to speak to is the uh salary grid and how it impacts the pay equity or and how it impacts our salary benefits. Um, so just to give some context, I believe it was back in June, we brought a report to council. Um, outlining the results of the compensation pay equity study. Um, and the impact to implement the salary grid. Um, at that time, council decided not to approve the grid, but to bring it back at budget time. So in the budget numbers presented today and presented also in the salary benefits. Uh, what staff have done is we've included the cost implement the salary grid. Um, as well as apply a two percent cost of living adjustment to the salary grid that was presented. Um, so again, in shorter terms, the salary represented would have a bunch of different pay rates. Uh, we identified two percent to those pay rates. Um, so a couple of things I just wanted to point out, um. Is uh the implementation of the grid, so uh right now, what we have in the budget is the grid at two percent. Uh, I also wanted to just provide council, just kind of break down how it works out a couple of different ways. So if council were to approve the implant implementation of the grid. Um, but not a two percent cost of living on it, it would result in a forty eight thousand dollar increase compared to the prior year. Uh, the one thing I wanted to note that, um, say council didn't approve the grid today, but they said, I mean, he said, we still want to do the two percent cost of living. Uh, that would still cost just under forty thousand dollars. Uh, so at the end of the day, to implement the grid just on its own compared to a regular cost of living adjustment. The difference is about eight thousand dollars more can put into the grid. Um, again, and hopefully I can answer any questions. Say the input of the grid, the additional two percent cost of living on the grid is an additional thirty eight thousand dollars keep increased. Um, so again. If you kind of add the numbers there for implementation purposes, forty eight thousand for the grid and then thirty eight thousand for the two percent cost of living. Um, I know I did a lot of talking there, I just wanted to make sure council is all kind of clear what's presented there. Um, it also might be worthwhile to have discussions on the on the salary and benefit pieces now.
Actually, I was wondering where you want to start some of these discussions that if we're moving forward, if you want to continue with the overview. You must remember there's a need for a ten minute break.
Ten minute break would probably be good. Uh, to you, Madam Mayor, and Jess, you you can answer this better. I think this is the first slide where we should probably start with questions. The other was just more of a high level, which we will get into further down in the in the slides after.
Yeah, I completely agree. So this is kind of the first slide where I think discussion is worthwhile, so it has an impact. The living stuff was just kind of a high level summary of facts, uh, where when we get into the individual departments. Um, we'd have decisions that may impact those, but. Uh, this, I would say, is kind of the first slide, uh, just because salary benefits, but you know, majority of the departments.
Okay, so let's resume then at eleven fifteen. Let's everybody get a drink of water.
Yeah. Yeah.
This looks funny.
Okay, it's eleven fifty now, we'll resume. And this is the territory that stated is the appropriate time to raise some questions or get better information regarding the salaries and benefits. Okay, Councilor.
So my critique is, I think at every, if we were to put in a salary grid. Without the two percent cola, we would knock thirty nine thousand, it was like just yeah. Me.
Okay, Councilor Chwan.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Just to carry on from Dad's comments. Like you try to call up top that to add extra thirty eight.
So three matter there. So again, kind of with the salary grid, it's a forty eight thousand increase. If we were to then apply two percent cola to the salary grid. Um it's additional uh thirty eight thousand, three hundred and sixty five dollars increase. Um again, the purpose of the poll is with the implementation salary grid. Not every, everyone guaranteed a minimum of one percent increase with it. Uh but that means implementing the grid, some people wouldn't be keeping up with cost of living. Uh so that's just why management's proposed. Uh but that means implementing the grid, some people wouldn't be keeping up with cost of living. Uh so that's just why management's proposed.
Okay, Councilor Sanders. A mayor, so are both of those numbers in here or you got one over the end?
So to your matter, Mayor, currently the budget of forty eight thousand and the thirty eight thousand, three sixty five are included. Yeah, the again, the the second bullet point I had note, that was just to provide counsel. No salary grid, but we did what we normally do and do, you know, hospital implementation, it still costs us, you know, thirty thousand dollars in in a regular.
And perhaps you can see, um. What are our options above legally or whatever, legislation wise, not applying to sell.
Yeah, it's very matter, Mayor, uh we would, as a township, run into some issues if the salary grid was not implemented. Uh just on the pay equity side, um. It it wouldn't be, I guess, in compliance of legislation, because we did find rates that had to change.
Sorry, clarification. Trouble with the government because we didn't apply it or trouble because somebody felt that we're being fair?
It's I. And I'll, I can let our CEO, Vanessa Laucker, see if you go and find this standing, it's just, we also are meant to have pay equity. Uh the study that find, uh you know, rates that we had to apply, so if we did not apply it. Um. That we would not have an immediate pay equity legislation. Uh again, how that looks up to who's upset is the government, but it's employee upset. Um just kind of it is more the fact that we know that this um parts.
Okay, Councilor, please.
Uh Mayor, uh hey, we do study, did this cost us money?
Yes.
Yeah, to your matter, Mayor. I have looked at the results recently of all the invoices, I believe we came under budgeted, but if we did budget twenty thousand dollars in twenty twenty five. Um yeah. I don't, I don't believe we went over, it might be, you know, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen thousand, but or maybe closer to that, but.
And who who did the study? We did it or somebody else?
Testing associates.
So we hired somebody for eighteen and twenty thousand dollars. To tell us that we got to pay thirty eight thousand dollars more. Couldn't we save the twenty grand and just pay the people?
So.
I'm just.
Yeah.
You're killing me.
Uh to your matter, it's not necessarily about paying people, like with the compensation study, uh one finishes by some pay equity. Uh the second thing, it provides us a salary grid that all employees are on, so administratively. Uh implementing salary grid, everyone's placed on it, uh currently, based on past conscious practice. There wasn't necessarily the grid, people were just kind of given rates. Um so one, it adds equity to the hiring process, because you can see the grid and you're placed on it. Um uh and as well, just again. Uh administratively, this allows us to um have, you know. Uh a process like then going forward, where we're only doing cost of living increases to the grids that everyone's on, um and it keeps it a bit more fair.
Chief Quinney has something to say.
Uh this, through your matter, um my former employer, I was involved with the pay equity process. Um there's an obligation to file the pay equity plan with the Patrick Commission for Ontario. And if you fail to do so, the commission can order you to pay. So uh there is some, there is some teeth to the legislation if you're if you're not compliant.
Just uh on that note. To my knowledge, we were compliant. And that this township was not. Without a pay equity plan, it would have had to been filed years ago, as in two thousand, in that timeframe. And people followed through after that point in time, the fact that we decided to. Uh reopen pay equity, and that was an elective choice. At this point, via the township and the CEO. And as for salary grid, I believe uh during a previous CEO, we had one that was identified in that with uh Troy. You know more. So to me, this was a. An expensive exercise, it's going to continue to be expensive. And that uh if we go to this new pay equity study. How long are we expecting that that's going to bring about? So that's a question.
Through your matter, I'll just one thing to point in Troy, a former C O D percent of salary grid. Um but and we kind of use that for hiring going forward, but with that implementation, it didn't put all of the former employees. Or employees, it is employed onto the grid, so the difference here is with this new grid. Is we're like, where every single employee gets placed on a grid at the prep and expected rate. Um the other thing is. Uh this was a complete, um I guess this was a bit more in depth, what we concluded that we had job studies and job surveys and market comparators. Uh with what was done by the consultants. Um so from my understanding, we've done the study, and again, when you do a a compensation study, it's not the incumbent, you're doing the position. We have all the information, we have all the documentation. Going forward, it's unless there's like a new position, it's just maintaining that the bands that have been um created.
So in other words, it's not anticipated that we have to go through another pay equity study. At any point, with the exception of uh new documentation, if this new role that is created.
Yes, and to your matter, Mayor, and with that documentation, we have the tools to do that uh internally, so we wouldn't need to, if it's a new position. Um the the jobs can be violating this appropriately, I agree.
So going back to your um. Recommendation and suggestion that. To implement the pay equity study without cola being applied, it would cost us forty eight thousand and seventy dollars.
Correct.
However, with cola applied, which to me should be in the next year after the fact, because this is supposed to be accurate, the pay equity at this point in time. Uh then there begin additional, there begin a thousand eight hundred.
Uh to your matter, so um just one comment on that, the reason why the call is applied is because the screen. The work was prepared January, you know, to April, and then was presented to council in May or June. Um so. The the only reason we applied it is the the rates do kind of, you know, we did mark comparators that do fall out, uh but the the other thing is. Let's say the grid was just approved today, and then next year, then we have the costful relief to just apply to the grid. Um but that may be kind of like how we did benefits the last two years. Um like our current process is what was everyone's rates last year and apply two percent. Uh so we go back to kind of a similar process. It it wouldn't be every year, there would be two increases, like once we're on the grid, whenever we choose to apply cost of living, that's what would be applied.
Last year, we applied a two percent cost.
Yes.
To the existing grid. So I think from my view and that, taking the hit for if we go to the new pay equity grid. Should actually be sufficient without any looking at. Anything else until we get through it in the line, because if not, I'm I'm looking, am I wrong? I'm thinking that it's around eighty seven thousand. Dollars in the end.
Yeah, yeah, if you are in forty eight.
Yeah.
And to your matter, again, just to highlight, if it's just the grid, every employee is still getting at least a one percent. Uh increase as as a minimum, like going on to the grid. Uh again, just go back to conversations in June. Um when you implement the grid, you're on one dropping uh rates, so people up to the next house at a minimum of one percent. So staff would still be, all staff would still be receiving uh an increase on on the grid.
Okay, so I think, you know, give them a presentation, the figures have ever been a little bit clearer, maybe to the others that. That's how little of an increase you're looking at. Now, my other question is, the uh over thirty percent premium increase. Who's our our supplier for the uh benefits package? Is it Clarica Sun Life or?
Uh Sun Life is.
Okay, so going back to that. And I suggested this uh last year, and I could see in the hospital sector, we used to be banned together with other hospitals to get a better rate. From these, and as you identified that we have a small number of employees, so we don't have that leverage. For getting a larger rate, has there been the expiration of? Getting group benefits and that with other small municipalities or even the county.
Through your matter, we see our part of a group um included in it is about six or seven municipalities. Um the issue with that is we're grouped up for um disability and life in those larger groups. But they do not provide grouping for the health and the dental and the drugs. Um as far as I was aware, again. Um with the the groups we're part of, that's the same for every municipality in that group, is that the drugs and dental. Um like, you know, or any mental health or, you know, physical therapy, that that's all kind of on each individual municipality. Um we we could look to see there are options, like again. Uh from my knowledge, I don't know, um. How common uh it is for uh, you know, health and from those types of groups of municipalities. Um again, we we are benefiting though from a group of others currently.
Maybe it's a discussion at Roma and that, and check with a few other. Mayors and that to see if there's any interest in getting a larger group to get it. Because one of the things that can be quite devastating is catastrophic illness. Do we have a cap? On to how much our drugs go?
Yeah, to your matter, there there is a cap um uh for all clients, uh I think that's a requirement for any benefit plans, that being sure this even have themselves. Uh so yeah, it it is not unlimited impact, but it is.
So you have a follow question? I'm thinking fair, kind of thing fair, so that's what I guess it. So if we apply the two percent, everybody gets two percent, which would be considered. Fair perhaps, do we have the option then of delaying the implementation of the salary pitch for like six months? So we sort of smooth out, because I, it appears some people are going to get a. Oh, it's substantial, I know the number is substantial, it increases if we apply both, as you move upon the grid. Could it be a little smoother? Those increase outs and if we delay. The uh the implication, implementation of selling until six months.
Yeah, to your matter, Mayor. Uh I wanted to have to look in the numbers, like what would happen? If we do the two percent cost of living now, how does that impact someone on the salary grid? Um like as we stand now. How it's been done and looked at is, we know putting everyone on the salary grid will increase the rate. It's just if you do the two percent for some employees, that might then put them over with the grid, uh so do.
Okay.
Is is the idea I look into.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so just for processing. Would it be appropriate then to do a poll at this point for this particular? Item on the budget, so we have an indication as to which way we're heading.
So through you, Madam Mayor, um not necessarily a poll, but certainly direction from council. Uh so direction from council, do we want to remain as is, what's proposed, would we like to uh? Is one option. Second option is just implementing the salary grid in and of itself. Uh without the two percent cost of living. Actually, essentially that would be the two. So. Through you, Madam Mayor, my recommendation, if council is looking to implement one or the other, I would suggest that we implement the salary grid. And uh postpone a two percent cost of living, uh and then that way it gets. The salary grid in and implemented, everyone is on it, and going forward, everyone will be treated fairly.
And not to complicate things further, I guess another option is, we could do like a one percent cola on the grid, it doesn't have to be two percent. Um but just as as a third option.
Yeah.
And. That would, I guess, guarantee everyone at least a two percent cost of living.
Okay, I'd be interested to know um how much of the difference there is, because we don't have that many employees. And that. If the majority of them are going to be getting uh. A decent amount of an increase with this salary grid. And if it's just. One or two at the top end that are getting the one percent, I less problem with. So could you bring that information back perhaps to the next uh?
Yeah, through my. I'm just trying to think, um. Whether that would have to go on close providing.
If, in general terms, is it the, and this has been my experience, if the higher end of the grid. Which is usually one that has the least. Amount of percentage benefit, but they still get a significant dollar benefit compared to those that are at the lower end of grid.
Yeah, so I think I could probably provide what percentage of people get. More than uh, one percent or what percentage of employees get one percent only, uh, then that led to your question to. If if we're, if we're just trying to analyze like how our employees overall number was affected by the implementation.
Okay, and with that. Any further discussion? Would anybody else in council, like had that sort of information as to? The bulk of the employees, if was benefit from the pay equity, what pay ranges they are basically. Lower into the scale is what I'm thinking. Compared to at the top end. After Javonaki.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. I think. First of all, I do support pay grid, sound good, think it's important to get employees going forward for employees and re-placing employees. Let's see the. Increase, I know we have a small increase here, forty eight thousand would be almost two percent, some. Micro higher, but I don't want to see anybody to go above the grid lines that time. So let's get the people who, like Mayor said, who from one percent total higher maps up their cap, but the ones who are the lower. Don't mind sitting trying to get real fast, maybe they get a two percent, like, so as Jesse had mentioned, maybe you go the age of the grid. And I said two percent, I'll go one percent call for the lower balance, keep the people at the grid max and if you reach it. So then everybody stays in the fair, in the fair range. That makes sense?
Yeah, historically, the grid was meant to try to level the playing field for those at the lower end. Versus at the competitive salary and top. So I. My inclination will be that the pay equity goal would be uh, applied to the different among the grid. And this is for that, but that's my inclination. I'll go around the table and ask. Counselor Holden.
I would be the same.
Hey, Counselor Javonaki.
Good, I think we should, yeah.
Okay, Counselor Saunders.
Uh, I agree with it, psych, have at the academic place, sometime in twenty twenty six, we would have a review of where people are determined if there's any. Outstanding issues. Uh, whether it's appropriate for. I I want to understand after it's been implemented.
Counselor Ackley.
Yes, that was good to meet you.
Okay. Would there be any back pay that were? Okay, all right, so we, I think we got to the direction and to do the pay equity grid, give it a fair. Footing. And as it gets reviewed during our lame duck period, probably not the best move, maybe the newest council. In twenty twenty six can look at that when they're forming your budget.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If one of the reasons. If it now gets implemented, going forward, this will be left. Obviously, since on. All right, we'll make note for that. Um, and again, I'm just going to highlight again, um, this presentation that's going to be presented the same. Uh, for next week is going to be the same as this one, any changes that were discussed out of this week or next week will be brought to the December uh, eighth council meeting, so. I just wanted like, get you a heads up when we present next week, there's not going to be a change to this number yet, but we will all implement it.
All right, now your your general.
Yeah, so our general here um, is uh, again, kind of with this department, we have a supplemental taxation. Uh, payment with taxes, maybe uh, bank interest, also taxation penalty. Um, and then we have a couple offsetting costs, whether uh, the uh, attacks right off or any unsuccessful tax sales, we need to. At that, there's thousands of. Um, the one thing I want, we've central transfer, that's our payment annually to the back on my seat. Um, and then the reserve transfer, uh, again, what we've done for this department is we've matched the reserve transfer to the expected revenues. As a way to kind of build up our operating reserves. Um, again, uh, should there be uh, more revenue or kind of. Uh, more expenses, uh, it kind of balances it out. Um, ultimately, with this, I have very easy, you know, on the tax, we would have the kind of department set up. Uh, moving on to council, uh, not too many changes, so. Um, included in the budget this year, there was a two percent increase to the honorariums only, the monthly amount. Um, which has uh, increased uh, salary benefits. Um, all kind of goes through, so yeah, so at high level, we're looking for the department at a seven percent increase. Um, the one thing I will know, but I don't have it off the top of my head, is in the twenty five budget, we did decrease council's budget pretty significantly. Um, so I think we're still lower than we were two years ago, um, but twenty five compared to twenty six, we're up to seven. Um, first part salary benefits, so we didn't increase the rate for special meetings, um, where they not budgeted. Um, we just applied a two percent cost of living to the monthly honoring for council members, uh, based on the current rates. Uh, in materials, we have a decrease um, of thirty one hundred dollars, new voyage and licensing cost. Um, again, if we've had implementation costs to get set up with our online uh. Uh, website for like the council agendas and all that stuff, so that's come down a little bit. Uh, contracted services, this year we do have a two thousand dollars increase uh, for training for the newly elected council that we would expect to take place before the end of the year. Um, additionally, just five thousand is budgeted, this is just based on um, kind of expenses we've incurred in twenty five and what we expect to occur a little bit in twenty six. Uh, we just increased the amount just for uh, legal uh, services for twenty twenty six, uh, just to making sure we have some of that built into the budget. Um, so I'm just going to go back to the slide, those kind of summarizes the main key differences. Um, and and like I said before, while the department's showing a seven percent increase. Um, it's still less than what the department was uh, even two years ago. And to you, Madam Mayor, I think the process now is, when I get down to the department and there's like things that are changing, I'll pause, but you guys have. Discussion or questions on that.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make one point, I believe last year when we were doing budget. There had been a motion passed that there would be a freeze on the salary for the counselors for that year, as well as extending into the year.
Uh, to be mad at that, that's the case, I I literally forgot that, I thought it was just for the twenty twenty five. Um, if there is a motion that uh, has frozen it, then we can reflect that change. Uh, barring the council doesn't want to make a subsequent motion to amend that one, I guess.
Okay, and on that standing ocean though. For. The next uh, council that gets elected in. There should be a reflection of. The salary increases that have been foregone by this particular council and that, to the point where the usual bar has been. Uh. Comparison with other municipalities and that. And in the roles for the two roles that go to the county and that usually gets. Been placed at the level of the mayor's salary. To those two roles, so. I don't want to see any future. Uh, counselors. Being. Disadvantaged, and that is enough difficulty in getting good people wanting to take on a role, but it does not pay a lot, because again, what? But the fact that this council has been very frugal in making any uh. Improvements, I think that there should be a reflection. In place and that for a secondary mechanism, I believe in the past, there used to be a. Finance committee that would make a recommendation for. Uh, salaries to counselors and that, but we need to look at something like that, because even when we're coming into the election to say that. It's the same salary levels what it was four years ago, is not very appetizing to anybody who wants to throw their hat in the ring.
Through you, Madam Mayor, thank you. Uh, so uh, council has to uh. Review the uh, honorarium amounts for council at least once within their four year term. And to my knowledge, it has not been done as of yet for this term. Uh, it was my intention to uh, bring it forth in the twenty twenty six um, discussions next year, so. Uh, certainly those comments will be taken into account for the um, honorary backlog for council.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? We want to get most of them at the end of this. So, Counselor Ackley.
Well, it's uh, like materials, I I guess that decreased, and why did that decrease?
That was the diligence software, so it's only thirty one hundred dollars, um, or there's a thirty one of their fee reasons like this.
And the contracted services, can we explain more why? Is this lawyer fees or?
Yes, so legal expenses would be our external counsel, um, again, just just for reference, like even when we have, you know, integrity commission reports, that's all. The process and that should be followed, I just come with a bill, so this is just possible analyzing. Um, based on what's happened this year and what we kind of expect on the horizon for next year, just putting a little bit in the budget just for this.
You gotta figure it out at the house there, I see.
Okay. Anything else? All right, continue on.
And so um, budget we have here now, we're going on to uh, administration. Uh, again, kind of a high level, we're seeing uh, an increase in revenue. Um, and then uh, also an increase on expenses. Um, again, I'm just going to get into the next task, because that kind of breaks down uh, what things are going, but kind of how the budget's presented now, it's only a two hundred. Twenty seven dollar increase of point zero five percent. Um, so a-again, the department's relatively staying the same words is, and we'll kind of break down why that's happening. Um, the first reason is we've had an increase in the O M P allocation. Uh, in twenty twenty five, it was two hundred and eighty eight thousand and it's lined up with three hundred and sixteen thousand and nine hundred dollars. Uh, so right off the bat, that's money that we receive, and then it can go directly into covering our operating costs. Um, again, it's a little bit different than our O S F or gas caps and that, the fact that it can be used to cover uh, operating expenditures. Um, the other other revenue increase we're seeing is the um. Amounts budgeted uh, or transfer from uh, the election reserve. Um, so with the election reserve, um, basically councils been putting aside either twenty five hundred dollars or five thousand dollars the last few years. Um, so that when it comes down to uh, budget time, we have. Uh, funds to help kind of cover the cost. Um, so in the budget, how we're doing it is we're pulling all the funds from reserves. Um, on the other side of it, we do have expenditures for the uh, elections. Um, if we don't end up using all these funds, then they just go back to reserves and we'll fund the next election. Uh, in uh, twenty twenty. Um, so just speaking to that, um. Uh. We'll get to, I guess, just to speak on that point, it's going to be on our next slide, but just since we're talking about. Um, currently, there has been a budget of uh, thirty thousand dollars for election expenses. Um, so there's currently about seventy five hundred dollars uh, that we have to raise in taxation, that's not covered by those that are currently. Uh, we can discuss that more in a second, but salary benefits. Uh, again, this number is going to decrease, uh, once I adjust it to just apply the grid and no cost of living. Um, several larger increases as well, as we have uh, two positions that were only in the township for nine months that were expected to be for twelve homes in twenty twenty six. Um, and then also the thirty percent increase in employee back of premiums. Um, again, we are going to see that number draw, uh, once we remove the two percent cost of living from the salary grid. Uh, for materials, we see a decrease here, so. Um, the biggest part is uh, we have to invest for new computer hardware. Um, with the two new uh, ways last year, we had to purchase laptops and all, you know, students' keyboards, all that stuff. Um, with uh, keeping the same employee headcount for the administration department, we're decreasing the budget that we're spending on that in twenty twenty six. Um, this is offset by inflationary adjustments uh, uh, for material expense accounts. Um, you'll notice this line, inflationary adjustments, again, that's just returning to us applying two percent to. You know, our office supplies, our hydrogen, all that stuff, um, so it kind of offsets some of the decreases in that. Contracted services, there's a lot of movement in this one overall to thirty six thousand, uh, five hundred and seventy two dollar decrease. Um, thirty four thousand dollars of that is as a result of the township we've now taken, accounts payable and payable in-house. Um, so the fees that we pay to the county product for financial services is decreasing quite significantly. Um, in the twenty twenty five, uh, we had. Um, announced uh, a budget for asset management and pay equity, so that amounts were not budgeting and we're moving from budget twenty six, which is thirty two thousand dollars. Um, with the new website that we're implementing, that was brought to council recently, the hosting costs are actually a little bit cheaper, so that's a two thousand dollar decrease. Um, so those are all our decreases, we do have. Um, uh, twenty two hundred dollar increase in our contract and services to work on N I T. Uh, and lastly, we have uh, thirty thousand dollars in the budget for election expenses. Um, again, I don't, again, when I do these budget reports, we have the decreases, but they are being offset by those two increases. Um, the last thing is a reserve transfer, so um. Staff perceive direction for council to proceed with uh, going ahead with our new website. Um, during that uh, or council meeting, uh, there's a council resolution to fund it from reserves. Um, in twenty twenty five, so in twenty twenty six, we're just refilling their reserves. Um, ultimately, this just means that for the website implementation costs, we're raising tax dollars to do it instead of just pulling from reserves. And and not filling the reserves back. Um, so I'll go back again to the main slide here, um, if there's any questions or discussion points for the administration.
Hey, Counselor Holden.
So. Oh, I think I have a just for clarity, uh, thirty thousand for the election. We twenty six, but it's already in reserves and we're just taking it. From there, yeah, okay, so we are budgeting right, we're budgeting about seventy five hundred a year, every year?
Yeah, so so we have. Yeah, I guess in that normally we've been budgeting five thousand, so this year, we're not putting in reserve, but we're, it's an additional, yeah, seventy five hundred dollar expenses, just as a little. Make sure I wind up on that.
And the other question is, then we also will knock thirty nine thousand. Approximately off this because of the not using.
Through Madam, this was that one, it's thirty nine thousand across all the departments, so we will see a decrease, that number won't be eighty seven thousand, but. It'll only be admin employees portion will be, we forgot that.
All right, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Javonaki.
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Counselor Saunders.
No, thank you.
Counselor Ackley.
I have no.
Hey, um. I remember. I thought I remembered correctly that how much it cost us to run the election. Previous time. I thought it was actually a significantly lower figure. As in for twelve thousand dollars for running the election. I thought we were budgeting generously forward, so I'm just wondering what was the percentage increase from previous municipal election? To this.
Thank you. Um, so previously, um, it was my understanding that um, the municipality went in with the other four municipalities. Or the other three municipalities uh, with County Frontac, um, and did a joint R F P. Um, that being said, that was the intention this year as well, however. Uh, we are the only municipality that's doing paper and balloting, uh, everyone else has gone strictly. Uh, telephone and internet, so I have to do an R F P on my own, so uh, that is to be up today, um. And again, as the, as Jesse has indicated, uh, whatever funds are not spent. Are certainly kept in the reserve for future, so uh, depending on what it looks like at the end of twenty twenty six, whether we need to. Continue with five thousand or if we reduce it back down to twenty five hundred or. However, much is left over.
Good to know, especially since we have such a high voter turning rate, which seems to be in the norm. Uh, Counselor Saunders.
Thank you, Madam, follow up question, so it's costing us thirty thousand dollars to have paper ballots?
Through you, Madam Mayor, not necessarily, um. And I'm. I don't know how much it's going to cost us right now until I get an R F P ballot, yeah. Uh, there's not too many um, companies that do. Telephone, internet and paper ballot, uh, so if one company just does telephone, internet, then I have to find a third. Uh, supplier to, that actually does the paper printing. Um, for the ballots, um, and tabular, just kind of thing, so.
Follow up question, Madam, um. So what? What you're asking in terms of what it would cost us if we had R F P with the rest of the townships and county?
It's a very good question, I don't know, because the county hasn't put, uh, the other three municipalities have not put their R F P out as yet either.
Thinking about it, essentially, we're, we only, as soon as we see we're raising, you know, when we do. That of the transfers are raising seventy five hundred dollars, so it's not significantly more, I think, again, it's better safe than sorry, especially since it's our first year being. Um, it just builds a wrapper, uh, again, though, if the cost are less, it's just going to mean we're going to have leftover reserve. And then for the next four years, you know, that council will have to raise less money for.
So Madam Mayor, follow up question. What I'm trying to understand is the the financial impact of our decision to have big ballots. That's what, that's our current shape.
Yeah, I mean. Sounds like we don't have the exact, you know, figure on that, um. That said. When we do. Mail it to that, they're getting mailed a code. When we do mail it to them, they're getting mailed a code versus a paper ballot, so there's no mail in ballots? Or is it going to be mail in ballots allowed?
So through you, Madam Mayor, no, um, each individual resident will get a. What's called a voter identification card, right? So it gives you. Um, depending on which ward you're in and the mayor at large, it gives you. Who's running, it gives you your identification code, the URL that you log into. Uh, and then there's two identifiers, so you have to put in your. Your code that you're given as well as your date of birth or whatever other second identifier that we utilize, um. Every eligible elector will receive one of those, if they wish to vote by paper. They bring that with them, we strike them off that they, we verify that they haven't already voted. Uh, and if they haven't already voted, then we strike them off, give them their ballot, they go. Fill out their ballot and place it.
So their cut out date for voting will be the end of early voting, they couldn't be logging in on the voting day or else you could end up with a duplication of votes crap.
That's correct, so if you vote from home or you're standing in line to vote by paper ballot. And you log in, put your uh credentials in, it automatically strikes you off that you've done it, so you can't vote twice.
Well, actually, you wouldn't. Okay, I'm just, I'm just making sure in that, that if they're checking in, it used to be that you would strike them off the list.
Yeah.
Well, we're not striking them off the list, it's being computerized and there's no opportunity for you to get double votes, is what you're telling me.
Correct, so we're still striking them off the list, it's just not a paper list that we're striking them off.
Right, but you could never pull their vote back if they've already voted at home.
No, that's correct.
And that's so, anybody doing a double take on that would be charged.
Criminal, yes.
Criminal charge. I need to make sure people have a good understanding of that. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Um, just to finish on, we have uh emergency management, um.
Sorry, if I may, so just for clarification, because I'm making notes, there was no changes other than the two percent to the admin, is that correct? Sorry, Jesse, my bad.
The next up here is emergency management. Um, again, overall, uh it's actually a little bit of a decrease what's been raised by taxation. Um, and then I'm just gonna kind of get into those changes, um just because. This one's probably a little bit more complicated than it needs to be, but I'll walk you through it all today. Um, the first government transfers, uh there is no change here, but I just want to highlight uh the fact that we are applying for the same grant. Um, uh that we did in the twenty twenty five budget, so that's an emergency preparedness grant. Um, we weren't successful in the application, but there's another thing opened up this year. Um, generally, what we're hearing is that some groups get first one year and then you might have better odds the next, so our fingers are crossed. Um, again, uh the specifics of that, I think we're buying um. Whatever the supplies or equipment that you needed, um, uh to make sure that we could have a proper response in case of an emergency. Um, on the record side as well, this is a fifteen hundred dollar, uh this is just an increase to township's public maintenance agreement. Um, which uh we get some money as a result of maintaining those areas, uh so that they can be used to operate in case of emergency. Um, there's a fifty thousand dollar decrease, so just to get some context to this. In twenty twenty four, it was um amount was over budgeted um for the O V P costs. So in the twenty twenty five budget, we had a transfer from the zero to kind of spread that surplus from twenty four to twenty five. Uh, and with this, this is, I mean, this last year, uh no such issue, so we're no surplus to kind of, I guess, expand into one point six. Um, on the expense side, again, in the materials, we have the same amount budgeted for the grant. Uh, as with last year, if we don't receive the grant, uh management will not be making like the purchases, there is something to be purchased if we receive the grant funding. Uh, on contracted services, we have uh thirty nine thousand eight hundred thirty two dollars increase. Um, this number might be subject to change, so we received last year, if you remember, there was the huge increase O P P and then they backtracked and had a lower amount. Um, this past year, we received notification is that the highest ethical increase in one year is eleven percent. Uh, at this time, I have not been provided with our twenty twenty six cost, so built in the budget today is the full eleven percent. Um, when we amend the slides and redesign in December, um hopefully we'll have the the real number by then. Um, but just with this budget, we wanted to be uh more conservative with that. Um, and then we also just have an increase in uh the health and maintenance that that came with the increase in revenue. The last thing, again, uh just to kind of refresh our memories is uh. Last year, we had a first budget presentation with the O P P costs and then we received notification that the amount was decreasing. Um, so what we did last year is instead of decreasing the emergency management budget, uh we then just allocated money to get put into reserves. Uh, which was around fifty six thousand dollars, again, for uh we split that seventy thirty between Wolf and Howe. Uh, Wolf put uh thirty nine thousand four hundred thirty four dollars towards uh the planning reserve upon the official plan. While Howe moved that contribution back over to um uh its roads capital projects. Uh, again, with this year, um, right now, uh we're not expecting any decrease, we are expecting an increase for contracted services. Uh, so this reserve transfer, it's just not present in the twenty twenty six budgets. Um, I'll go back to the main slide. Um, again, all that works out at the end of the day, um is a a small taxation decrease for the emergency management department.
Okay, any questions, Councilor Holden?
No question, thank you.
Councilor Jepolaki?
No questions.
Councilor Saunders?
No, thank you.
Councilor Ackley?
No comments.
Uh, I'm just wondering what is for the thirty one thousand and change that the grants supplying for, what are the items? Are they? Are they defibrillators, are they cots, what are they?
Do you remember, I'll let our chief answer this question, this is he's in the table on uh working on this grant.
So through you, Madam Mayor, uh the criteria is set for the grant in terms of what you should apply, what qualifies and what does not. Um, one of the main areas will be um some enhancement to this particular space as it relates to the. Emergency control room, being able to sustain for longer periods of time, um. Uh, as one example, uh generators and pumps were added to the uh to the list this year, so things like. You know, the amount of flooding or power averages and stuff, we can have additional equipment that could be deployed to their locations across. Across the municipality. That's the gist of it.
Just because I I know there's a charm in the ministry. And that, and they have a lot of things that they will loan out very readily in that if we ask. Uh, Jill Dunlop, who's the minister for that. Just wondering, generators are one of the things that they will, you may know.
Uh, key things through you, Madam Mayor, would be things like pilot launch and various containers and things like that, and public works like the Shetland Road or. That kind of things, you've tried to do in our application, spread it across as many departments that might benefit from added equipment. That could be deployed, um so it's things, but things like that.
Hopefully you'll have better about this shit, but discuss.
Um, so thanks, and I think just to get a summary, it's with Vanessa, looks like there's no uh changes will continue with the uh emergency measure budget as presented. Okay, um, livestock here, um, not too much to speak about, uh. Basically, um, contract and services, um, again, the livestock, we pay out losses when we get that reimbursed. Um, we have increased uh the payment to the evaluator, uh we just budgeted about two percent is there. Um, again, this one is really just dependent on livestock loss in the year, so it could be up or down. Um, but we just wanted to make sure that we were keeping up with inflation for the department. Um, library, um, again, in overall, we're just looking at a two percent increase, which is not uh. Uh, uh high for this department. Um, uh, just to kind of break down here, is in the past, there was a part-time employee that did the cleanings of the buildings uh for How Island. Um, and and specifically the library portion, so this is now contracted to a third-party company that does the cleaning. Um, so we're just seeing a decrease in saddle benefits, it's kind of offset by the increase in contracted services. Um, overall, the the budget's staying, uh which is a two percent increase. Um, moving on to planning, uh again, uh looking overall at a small decrease and I'll kind of quickly explain. Uh, what's causing that impact? Um, so actually, sorry, one second, uh just with regards to application revenue, um, we have seen a little bit more increase with the. Uh, changes of the county that in twenty twenty four, um, so we're just kind of budget, putting that into the budget. Um, with regards to the contracted services, um, so basically there's a four and seventy dollar decrease, um. Just to highlight, in the twenty twenty five budget, there is a fifty two hundred dollars as a one half expense. Related to the official plan water amendment, um that was present in the twenty five budget, that's not present in twenty twenty six. Um, so that's causing fifty two hundred dollar decrease. And twenty note, the annual cost that's budgeted and projected by the county for their services. Uh, did increase by four thousand and six hundred and sixty eight dollars. Um, it just happens to work out that their increase is less than that at one time on either piece in twenty twenty five. Uh, resulting in a video calls five fifty dollar decrease. Um, again, if there's no questions there, I'll continue on to the next department. Um, building here, um, again, the department. Uh, is looking somewhere to last year, the important thing that we always mention with the building is that uh it's designed not having impact on the tax rate. The charges we uh, the amount we charge for building permits should be sufficient to cover the cost to operate the department. Um, so with this, again, um, our C B O has indicated that we'll probably expect a little bit less activity in twenty twenty uh six and period twenty twenty five. Um, we have, uh, you know, saddle benefits and contracted services increases there, uh some of that with inflation. Um, the big difference is last year, we budgeted a little bit more to go to the reserve. Uh, and that we have less going this year, um, the year is not done, I I do think, um. We did have a fiscal year twenty five than I think we originally expected, so. We're hoping that that's able to build up the uh the building uh reserve a little bit by the end of the year, as well, even if we're not uh having that included in our twenty twenty six budget. So that covers it for the general departments.
Uh, I believe, Councilor, there's a question.
I just had a small question, what is contracted services in the building section?
Yeah, so contracted services, um, I have to, I have to see, so that one's not specifically. Um, it's not for any outside consultants, um, but if we had things. Um, you know, if there's uh any insurance that would be onto the building department, other items, I would have called up and looked, but I'm sharing my screen, um, so.
Yeah, perhaps Marcel can clarify that.
Yeah, there's a technical, a lawyer, if we use lawyer, or some, we uh we did, so. So we did some, there's some of the little small especially, so.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just, there probably are items, um, it's, we kind of just like the general caption, but. Um, it's kind of for things more along those lines, so there's some type of service that we're purchasing, but yeah, it's not like an agent salty or a cost like that. I figured that's probably where your question was, that one.
I know, we did, we did some renovation in twenty twenty five, we need electrician. That came and put some lights up. All this small stuff like that.
Yeah, the building maintenance for probably that other contractors, so. Um, so that covers it for the general admin departments, um, just kind of to check the D M A there. Everyone's good to continue on to the Wolf Island departments.
See, nodding around the table?
Yep.
Okay, good.
Perfect, see, all right, um, I think we're moving a little bit faster this year, which I'm grateful for a little less speaking, but. So the wolf wind, uh, again, since I've been here. How we present it is we have the wind revenue and then it's going into reserves. Uh, the one thing I did change this year is it is addressed on the individual slides. But just on this slide, I wanted to show how we're utilizing the wind revenue. Um, so again, uh, when we get to roads, you'll see five hundred and fifty thousand being used for capital projects, uh. Sixty six thousand is fully degraded loan. Um, again, I did speak to earlier of us trying to move away from reserves funding um our loan payments. Uh, to take this one off would have a large impact, and the other caveat of that is that it's the last year for the loan. Um, so that's kind of continued as normal. Um, up to six hundred forty five thousand dollars, currently twenty seven thousand one hundred and forty four dollars is unallocated. Um, so for now, we're not using all the revenue and then the published from the six project, we're not touching any of the money in the reserve. So it's only the additional revenues coming in that we're utilizing each twenty six budget. Um, Wolf Island here, uh, again, um, we're looking uh pretty good on uh this side. Uh, we'll get into it, the the revenues relatively consistent, there was just uh an application for the fire preparedness grant in twenty five, it's not present in twenty six. As we were successful in that one. Um, elsewise as well, um, it it generally, there's kind of two percent cost of living, barring a few uh specific items. Um, so just to go government transfers, as mentioned, um, in the budget last year is forty two hundred. Um, for the uh government transfers, and because I know this will be pointed out for someone, there is a small typo. Um, those two numbers should be matching, so I will make sure that's fixed on the December presentation. Um, going back, it's the four two before seven fifty is the correct number, not four hundred and, or four thousand four hundred and twenty seven. Um, going into materials, um, again, uh, we have an increase of sixty six hundred. Um, six thousand of that relates to the purchase of uh. Equipment related to water treatment and the U V system. Um, we do have uh a system already in place, uh this is requiring upgrades uh to make sure. Uh, we meet all our needs, uh if there's any kind of specific questions, I'm gonna chief off on this here today, should we be happy to answer them? Um, the remaining increase just again relates to that two percent inflationary adjustment. Uh, contracted services, uh we did see a two thousand dollar increase in our insurance premiums. Um, the remaining uh the thirty three hundred uh relating to inflationary adjustments. And lastly, um, so far, by department historically, uh we've been budgeting for well fifty thousand dollars to go to reserve. Last year, there was an additional fourteen thousand dollars relating to the shorewell. Um, originally, we're doing the budget, we were, uh, just for context, we were planning to do the expenses in twenty five and replenishing, so. Sorry, expenses in twenty four and replenishing twenty five. Uh, with that being said, short version, we I don't have that contributing factor, so we've just removed it um from the reserve transfer. So it's just fifty thousand dollars of reserve, uh as it was normal in the past. Um, last thing, uh for the Wolf Island uh fire capital loan, um. Since we did not have that fourteen thousand dollars going to the shorewell, uh in the past, we did cover the vehicle loan payment by reserve transfer. That's been removed and the vehicle loan payments now being handled by taxation. Again, I believe this loan will have issues uh in twenty point seven. Um, but like I said, it's just a better philosophy to be able to fund our loan payments. So I'm just gonna leave it here at the summit, if there's any questions or comments.
Okay, I think when we get around to the road section, that there'll be more.
Yeah. That's a.
Questioning comments, so that's why I'm holding my session on.
Yeah.
So, questions, Councilor Holden?
No, just to recommend, let's see that we're funding our purchases out of taxation, not out of, as you said, I think that's great way to do it.
Hey, Councilor Jepolaki?
No, thank you, man, no, no problems, no thank you, it's on clues bill.
Okay, Councilor Saunders?
Thank you, Madam, I have my annual question, Chief Hawkins?
Yes.
Is there any additional funding required or opportunities to improve emergency services given our lack of paramedics on the island?
Uh, we probably could do some more funding, we're gonna be into that a little more. This year, looking into that because of the paramedics not being here. So maybe by the end of the year, we're kind of working on that very time. Let's just come uh concrete things.
So then a follow up question, so um, let me look at the numbers, is there, we serve money for fire, should enough be to come up? Or we could go from reserve, is that anybody?
Yeah, so through you, Madam, I guess, I guess right off the bat, like, we are putting fifty thousand dollars, so we we do have that to kind of work with next year, if something comes up. Um, again, I think we still have around forty thousand, we have been using the fire reserve, we've purchased the new tanker and whatnot, but. It's not empty right now, plus the fifty thousand, it just shy under a hundred thousand available for twenty six.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Ackley?
No comment.
Okay, and yes, I'm a big believer in actually utilizing reserves, there are real reserves that you plan on. And that rather than just reaching into creepy jars.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on to the Wolfberry, um, again, for the department, uh, we're looking at around a twenty five hundred dollar increase. increase, or sorry, yeah, twenty five hundred dollar increase of three point seven six percent. Salary benefits, again, this number will come down with the removal of the two percent cost of living applied to the grid. Materials, we have just a twenty thousand dollar increase. So fourteen thousand dollars of that is to purchase de-ices. So sometimes it's ice heaters for the docks. This is a system to avoid ice buildup. Again, we did notice in twenty twenty five that we did have ice buildup sometimes and we'd have to, you know, spend money to get it broken up so the barrier to offer it safely. So this is a little bit of spending to avoid some of those avoidable costs. Six thousand dollars for the purchase of a set of cooling tank. Again, with the new building, we were finding that the set of costs was a little bit higher than expected in twenty five. So the purchase of a holding tank is ultimately to reduce the amount of contracted services of the set the company commonly attempting to ultimately involve on this will save the contract money as well. Last thing for materials, we just increased the amount we purchased for cables. Again, this is just trying to be aligned with what we're actually seeing for the department. I do know Chief Hawkins has walked into a better quality cable and it seems to be lasting longer. So again, we kind of pipe up to this five thousand dollars. The budget will be aligned with our expenses and that will stay in track. The decrease last year, we had additional amounts go to reserves. We just had some increase in the operating expenditures that decreased the reserve transfer.
Do we get the eighty to twenty applied to all this?
Yes, yeah, that's all, yeah, twenty percent funded or by the chance of an eighty five into it.
Okay, and I'd be very interested to see what the de-icing for the dock looks like because they never got that down path for the big docks, not for when we were already standing up here. But if we had something, I'm interested to see what that looks like.
Well, Madam, to you, Madam Mayor, last year, just to give a scoop, they were over a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, but I don't know what the machines look like.
Oh, oh, well, I, I can send you the well.
Yeah, I love to see that.
And basically, all it does is keep the water circulating. You circulate water or it might freeze.
So it won't deal with the spray that gets.
No, it's got nothing to do with that. The dogs will be.
Okay.
Also refer to as bubbler systems, right? So it just, yeah.
I was hoping it was something to do with the spray.
No, it's nothing to do with that.
Okay.
Right, yeah, no problem. Just one thing I did should have mentioned, these budgets were presented to MCO on October fifteenth, so we have their approval for all these purchases as well, right? Okay, so on to the department where we'll probably spend the whole discussion.
So salaries and benefits, three hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. How many employees are on that there?
So the ferry does now operate twenty four seven, so there is a bit more hours for the Howe Islands. I think we have three full time and maybe five where so part time fashion.
Yeah, that's why the, the variance between the two islands were.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Good answer.
Any other questions, Councilor Houghton, or over on the window, I'm listening. Councilor DeBlanick, you go first. Councilor Saunders?
No, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you.
On to those. So we have the roads department here. The one thing I did want to mention off the bat, just with the information being presented, one change of it this year, especially into asset management and what we're, what we get for capital funding and what we raise. In the past under revenues, we usually have the OCF revenue included on kind of the operating revenues. This year for the budget, that's all kept down on their capital revenue. And then just for context, the twenty twenty five column, I just moved it from operating revenues down oh, I'm sorry. Down to capital, then that relates by taxation is the same if you were to look at last year's flash presentation. I just did that for more clarity year over year. What's the money actually going towards capital versus offering? So just wanted to explain that difference. I'm just going to get right into it. So salary and benefits. Included in salary benefits, so we have a part of the budget requested money to fund a one part time summer student. Again, this is looking at, I believe, three day work weeks over eight weeks or two months in the summer. The one thing I will note is we do have a lot of roads capital projects and we do have the grass mowing in-house. So having that kind of summer student that can, you know, assist with mowing or other things, just perfect for a little bit more time for our full of work staff. Who I think at the end of the day, they do a lot of work from maintenance and capital projects and operate pretty slim, so. This is just what we did as a request. I just made those seven busy months a little easier. Again, the remainder of the implementation inside grid. We expect we're removing the two percent cost letting, so that thirty five thousand dollars will come down a little bit. Materials, we increased the budget for the purchase of gravel specifically. This is on the operating side, so this is for road maintenance and not capital projects. Again, normally you'll see our public host departments up there springing the gravel on some of the gravel roads just to improve some of the driving conditions. For regards to materials, the rest of the thirty three hundred dollars, that's just applying kind of two percent to our main material accounts. Contracted services, we actually did see a little bit of decrease. This is mainly because in our budget last year, we generally have amounts approved for line painting just on a maintenance side. You'll see on the capital budget that we didn't put fifty thousand dollars to finish line painting on our projects in twenty twenty five. With that being said, from a budgeting perspective, you know, the fifty thousand dollars is significant online painting, so we do a bit kind of more from capital and less on the operating side. And then we also have an increase to insurance expenditure. Again, some of this is cost of living and some of this is when we get our bill, we get allocated by departments and a little bit of that is just picking it up, making sure that it's in the right place. That covers it for operating, just because there is quite a few items. I don't know if we want to just do our discussion on these items first and then we'll go to capital.
Okay, it's probably a good idea, Councilor Houghton.
The line painting at fifty thousand, I've just tried to get my head around it. It's been one of the number one complaints I've heard from people since that road was done and there's no line on it. I did point out to them that, you know, eighty percent of the roads over here are gravel, there's no lines on them. We've seen the vanish, but why is that so high? We were only like half a, is, does anybody know what it is a kilometer we get is painted? And are we only talking on the center line or are we talking outside line?
So we have Keith here. The manager.
I haven't got a price on per kilometer yet. Mark's never got back to me and a couple other places. It was fifteen thousand from the winter dock to the ancient stop bars last year. Brad, thirty kilometers to the so that one for he's coming a little high.
Oh, okay, that clarified quite a bit. Your job of doing pretty.
To be put it into people a lot of those.
Okay, so through my, I think when I represent the numbers in December, I will clarify that. What actually is going where. I think there's a little bit of a miscommunication, but we'll get that sorted out. Regardless, it doesn't sound like we're changing the the impact on the tax rate, but I'll make sure that's a little bit better, but.
Okay, well, just elaborate on that piece, Matt. I was told that the reason we didn't do line painting this year because of the new road. If there's any further roadwork than that, we didn't do a line painting on, as you said, the chairman up at this time, but if you get that set number per kilometer, it seems more than appropriate. All right, Councilor DeBlanick, any questions?
Thank you, Madam. Just one, just one question about the hybrid ice nine kilometer surface treatment. I can continue, I guess, we'll adopt this pass holiday wind road?
Yes.
One more question. So that, I forget now how far is the answer for? So that makes the ice is complete then, yeah.
Okay, Councilor Saunders.
Madam, this is kind of applies to the banks. Are we required to? And and are the legal implications if you do remove?
Okay, I'll direct that to our manager of road service.
That I'm not sure is some of the category of those that's about I didn't drop into. Thinking we don't have to.
Okay, Chief, put it to me then.
Through you, Madam Mayor, that was researched a few, a few years ago. It was actually when Troy Gilmore was here. The, and they actually addressed it through the insurance company as well as, you know, because of the classification of roads not required. And and the second piece to that was although if the road had a line and the general sense was if people are used to it, it's probably worth putting it back. But it was left to council at the time to say whether they wanted it or not.
Councilor Saunders, the thought of, so are, are we putting the township at risk by not painting? I guess it's, I'm looking for legal opinion on some.
Well, nobody here has a legal opinion on it.
I understand.
Like the CEO to ask for a legal opinion force?
Because whether we do or we don't, whether it's both ways.
There's no money there. Councilor, I got her.
Yeah, again, the line painting, can't finish, you got to finish the road before we put some bane on them anyway, like. It's, it's pretty hard to paint half a road and then come back, paint the other, for like one part's gravel, you hit the pavement and then you hit the gravel and like the whole lot is like that here. So is ours.
Going back to the line painting in particular. We have an aging population and it is the number one complaint that at this point in time we've also had head on crash and the ability to paint lines was already identified from Dawson Point into the village. So that's a small section that it's not that we have to do the entire area, especially on this new road and that it is extremely black. And so having that defined with lines, I see that whether there's a legal opinion or insurance or anything else, I know from the comments from the residents, we need to have a line painted on that road so that they aren't running into people in the dark, in the fog, or anything else. And quite frankly, I would be more than happy if we had lines marking the edges of the road in that because we've had snowplows that couldn't seem to find the edge of the road, alone anybody else that hits a separate area. But aside from the line painting that and the discussion of even how much road will get addressed at some point in time, we've had comments from the community in that regarding the condition of the road in front of the Anglican Church as well as the top of the hill is now a safety issue. Has been brought forward. So I hope if a further discussion is with prioritization of how capital is going to be used towards roads, let only enough.
Just to go follow up there. So somebody that's a two kilometer way into their laneway and it's double wide on a side road, we can paint the gravel? It's just defeats the purpose. So you turn on the main road with lines on it, you turn on a gravel road. And they have to relearn how to drive again?
Appreciate what you're saying is that this is a representation of the community and that that the line, I, when we get to the the direction of that, I'll be quite swift to clear that because we need to have lines in the road. And that's what the community is even, Councilor Houghton indicated is missing at this point.
Well, that's what I'd like to look into. Really want to look into what we have to have. I think the link comes because people have had it and are used to it. I've never had it on my road. And most of the roads in the island don't, and you learn pretty quickly how to drive down the road and pass something coming on to you. That's so it's the expectation. As far as putting roads down, lining down the side of the road, I don't know if you can see a white line with snow on it. But I don't see the need for that at all. That's just another added expense.
Chief, a question.
So while people are having conversations through, Madam Mayor, sorry, an Ontario line painting is not required for class three and four roads. However, minimum maintenance, which is your snow removal, ice removal, that kind of stuff is required based on regulation two, three, nine. So that's what the islands do, remove snow, remove ice and sand and salt and all that. But lines on class three and four rows is not required.
We don't need a legal opinion on that.
Yeah, and I think what's important for the community is that through you, Madam Mayor, sorry, I think what's important is is we need to recognize that the classification of the roads is based on the volume of the traffic that passes on that road at any given day. And so we are, of course, not the four oh one or highway two or highway thirty eight. And so that's why our roads are set at class three and then four. And so with that, and then there's speed limit that's attached to those classes and the volume of traffic, all of those sensor factors. And so line painting is not required.
Okay.
Yeah, through you, Madam Mayor. So I know we got a little bit sidetracked with the roads. I'm just going to get to capital, but I guess really the only thing on here is the part time students just want us to get council direction to leave that in the budget. I think that's probably the only thing on the slide. That might be worth getting council's direction.
Okay, Councilor Houghton?
I think it's great. I think employers students. I think it's pretty cheap. It's on the A's.
Okay, Councilor DeBlanick?
No, I have to go with Dan at looking at least our folks who try to do this manual work and have a student do it, all the better. Good idea.
Councilor Saunders?
Hey, is there funding? I have a federal or provincial funds bid in for stuff to do there.
We do not, Madam Mayor, we do actually have a program. Historically, it's been applied and for big city bay like the students there, just because those employees are hired through the township and then kind of build back to the board. But I think it's definitely something we've already looked at staff, seeing if we can explain our application to include those summer students as well.
Thank you.
Councilor.
Yeah, I don't really have a comment.
I agree that there's summer speaking to application and funding. It's usually flowed through and not as complicated. One thing that bears me though, and that is a twenty thousand dollar increase to purchase gravel for the road maintenance. Two years ago, when this council took office and that there was a crusher brought over. And the council was assured that we would have literally years of gravel on hand that we would never have to buy gravel for. And that's why I was quite concerned that that they seem to be purchasing gravel. And in twenty twenty three, I was told we'd have at least five years of the ground.
Yeah, three madam there. So it might again, just manage to set an outlook on it. The bypass road that's included in the budget would be using that gravel stockpile to complete the construction. And I guess just to note, we're on the twenty twenty six, so it's been twenty three, twenty four, twenty five that they'll purchase a gravel. So it has been using maintenance, but wherever we're, looks like we need to purchase some again, just to do those maintenance activities.
Who are we purchasing the ground from?
So historically, again, gravel, I believe primarily gets sourced from Mobile Island. The quarry, again, this is due, it can depend for the larger capital projects. There's a cost of transportation where it becomes a little bit less feasible to not source, but again, with the gravel, these purchases, it still comes down to getting quotes and if it's larger than, you know, a tender required, so. I for this purchase of one of the services. So just continuing on, I have our capital slide, which we probably have the most going on. I'm just going to talk about the expenses and then I'll briefly catch on sometimes when the revenues are being used to fund them. So again, as we discussed, it sounds like the township, we are budgeting for fifty thousand dollars line painting. It looks like there's been a little bit of a misrepresentation, so it might not necessarily be fifty thousand dollars just for the room ninety six. When we come back to the center, we'll make sure that's all organized, but high level summary, you know, we're looking for line painting in that amount. In the twenty twenty six budget, we have an additional nine kilometers of the surface treatment, so much of the work that we put in twenty twenty five. At this point, it comes down just to budgetary reasons. There still might be close to two kilometers still left on ninety six. But again, staff presenting this budget, trying to keep the tax rate, you know. Um, but again, uh, staff is looking at this budget, uh, trying to keep the tax rate, you know, in a more reasonable range, uh, kind of only went with nine in this budget. Um, for the surface treatment, again, uh, we'd be looking at using OSA and CCDV funding, um, as well as a transfer wind reserve. Um, we, we have about five hundred and fifty thousand thousand milliliters, um, from the twenty-six wind revenue going towards the roads project. Um, the other road that management, uh, has decided to prioritize in this budget for twenty-six is Reed's Bay, um, with about two point three kilometers. Um, again, uh, I think when it comes on condition of roads characterization, I'll let Kenaki speak to it, but it was identified by staff as. Um, being in more need of maintenance or something that's addressed, yes, sooner or later. Um, we have the bypass road construction, um, so again, uh, the township's, uh, committed to, uh, construct this bypass road that's, um. Uh, for Mary'sville, just a little bit, um, uh, uh, Mary'sville a lot of time we go through. Um, we've calculated that costs need to be completed at a hundred thirty thousand. Uh, the one thing I do wanna note is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of this is funded through development charges. Uh, so I know it's been a kind of a question, when are we gonna use development charges as part of the twenty twenty-one study? Uh, the bypass road was listed, um, we actually have more than a hundred thirty thousand dollars in development charges, but based on the study. Um, when Watson and Associates did it, there's still benefit to existing development, so it can't be fully funded. Uh, but that ratio of the one twenty-five to one thirty-nine is based on the study completed by Watson. Uh, the second last item here is we have the garage repairs, um, if you recall, the roof tender or the roof budget for fifty thousand in twenty twenty-five. Uh, when we looked at the project and did the tendering, we noticed that there was additional work that needed to be done on the inside being for capital repairs and upgrades. Um, so at this point, that forty-seven thousand dollars council gave staff direction to improve that tender amount. Um, so that price is locked in and the work will be completed in twenty twenty-six. Um, for the purposes of this discussion, so we've already kind of signed the agreement, so that's not necessarily one that can be adjusted. Um, just since staff have council approval and we have proceeded with the work. Um, the last one we have here is the greater loan, um, like I said in the wind, um, uh, wind budget, uh, slide. Uh, this is still being funded by the reserve as it's, you know, historically, that's where the funding's come from. Again, we're trying to move away from that, uh, the one bright side is this is the last year for the loan, so, um, there's a bit of funding for wind. Uh, but then going forward, that loan is complete, um, and that debt is removed, uh, from the township liability. Um, again, I think that covered, uh, I, I guess I will say today. Uh, staff did try to put together what we thought was the most urgent roadwork, um, while keeping a line. Um, you know, the taxation impact on residents, trying to find a good middle ground. Um, so those are the projects we've done, and I think, so council's aware, we have kind of. Used up all the remaining reserve and the twenty twenty-six funding for OSA and CCDV. So we'll still get annual funding, allocations amount. The one thing just to consider is that when twenty twenty-seven budget's being done, uh, we're not quite, quite have that as much funding available for the next year's budget as it's being used, uh, for these costs.
Okay. Counselor Holton?
This is a large one of our most contentious, but we did send their. Survey and the number one thing that is under our control, definitely under our control, is, uh, roads that people identify. I don't know what we're gonna do because I would like to see it not spend that much from our wind transfer, but I don't know how we're gonna catch up otherwise. I can see we can adjust the line painting a little bit, but nine kilometers that will pretty much. Finish us to the foot, I think, so at least that road will be done. Reed's Bay Road's been half done for. Five or six years now, so I, I can see it being done. The bypass road, we don't have much choice. We, we need, we're obligated to get that started. I don't see where we can change it too much. That's all for me.
Okay. Councillor Javonki?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And then go back to that road state we were mentioning way back then, at least we're making a attempt to get these roads fixed up. And, um, there's two point three kilometers take us to the third line to the beach. Fourth line, okay. Okay, so yeah, we have to, councillor Holton, that these are things we have to get done regardless, we're just trying to get caught up, so great plan, great plan.
Okay, councillor Saunders?
No, thank you, Dan.
Councillor Ackerman?
Uh, again, I, I just believe that we're just trying to pick up where. Nobody continued trying to fix things and, and we're doing our best. I, I believe we are. Has to be done.
The last time that what we did, we held off for a year and saved the OSA, um, in the funding that. And then that allowed us to get a significant piece of roadworks out. I don't like seeing eight hundred and nineteen thousand and that being put out and not being well-funded and, you know, taking everything from the, uh. From the wind transfer and that and leaving the next council and that with very little to move forward. And I look around to the other projects and that, and I. I look at it that, uh, we have roads within this village area that are in very poor shape. We have been promised. Previously that, you know, we were going to get a surface treatment, it, it's poor. Uh, we've had complaints for the. Ninety-six up by the Anglican Church and down that highway that actually has significant water issues. That, um, need to be looked after. So from my view in that, being conservative. Saving aside most of the, the funding for the OSA and the CCDV. And putting that aside and not moving forward as quickly on doing the nine kilometers of road and leaving it for the next time. We will be in far better shape in that. That's not to say that we don't maintain the majority of these roads, which are gravel roads. And the Reed's Bay Road, which is a high-traffic road for the tourist re- region. The reason makes a lot of sense, but I, I don't see the urgency in doing that. Nine kilometers, it does not bring us even to the end of the island in this budget. But I could see it going forward in the budget next and that end. If we look back at the road needs assessment that was, that we were working out of and that. And as it was pointed out, the classification of our roads here on the island. We aren't obligated at this point in time to move forward on that that fast. So honestly, I, I'm not in favor of moving forward on the nine kilometers of road. In this budget, I'd rather see a bit more work done on some of our. Gravel roads that seem to be losing their whole bottom out of them. And I think we could save a lot in reserve and then the next township on that will be in much better condition. These roads just haven't dropped in, they're just dying and that it needs a systematic plan, but. That's for I'm thinking.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I mean, that stuff is something we can consider, because speaking frankly, right, like. The amount of work we're doing this year, um, barring we get some of our miles for OSA and CCDV. We won't necessarily be able to do the same amount of work next year with the next council, so, um, I think that's a fair point to make. Um, I think another piece where we look at it is, you know. With the amount of roadwork, we do have a smaller public work staff, so. Um, I think the one where we're gonna be here off is a lot of transition, um, and, you know, almost a necessity that we, you know, have less money to work with. Um, the, the other thing too, if the roadwork needs to be done, if you delay, um, it could increase the cost or it was completely period. Uh, and at the end of the day, even if we have more money, uh, with our current staff regiment, like, we, we, it does take a pull on the staff and they worked very hard this past fall. Um, even if they had all the money, besides paying someone a lot more to do it, like to do twenty kilometers, right, like. Um, that's also consideration is just the man hours and the labor that we have available, that we, we do reach a limit. On the labor side as well, you know, as the money side, so, um. Uh, the one thing I will note, uh, again, for, we haven't touched what's in the investments for the wolf wind, so there's that lever, uh, for future process to pull on. As well as kind of what we have in the wind reserve, which is actually held, but not in investments, um, as it kind of moves regularly. Um, currently right now, I believe there's just shy of seventy thousand dollars in that reserve. Um, and again, with this budget, we're not touching any of that, um, so there are still some others for the future process to pull. Um, again, uh, I think you make some, some good points, I just wanted to give some of the staff thinking a compliment.
Okay. So. Any further discussion on? Councillor Holton?
I have a question. The nine kilometers, will that finish, well, just finish it, so that we finish it to the foot? And then a question here, Madam Mayor. Uh, the side roads, you said the bottoms are, I, I drive them quite regularly, I've found them to be in pretty good shape. Those are sectioned, it's get to it?
Baseline. Seems to be in very poor shape.
Baseline? Where, what's that?
From baseline to Reed's Bay, well, perfect. But I'm here's the point. No, I'm talking the eight. Seven, you can look at two and I have no, the eight is the rougher area and I'm my D. And I do. Uh, Keith?
I do have a big plan in for that and.
Speak up, please.
See, we do have to make this plan in for that and, uh, we're. Picking away at fall grading, we will. Made this very change for, excuse me, for what? We're working for gravel that maybe. Yeah.
Are there any other gravel roads that has struck you?
On.
That have people living on? And that I, I, I'm not as concerned with. A section that might not have anybody on them. And that, but, uh, people that have to get down and gravel road, that shouldn't have to break their, the sock of rope that's trying to do it.
No. See a problem with it right now. It's almost retarded. We do have those over there.
And, and the top of the hill at ninety-six, that where the water has migrated and taken the whole shoulder away?
This is a case column right now, still still over last week, it was price and. What's did he sell there? Or if it's, it's price of pavement on for. Matt, so.
Okay, and that includes front of the church area at twelve or not?
Yes.
Cause that's a very popular community center up there and.
Right, yes, and, uh, through Madam Mayor, I don't have the numbers up, but, uh, within the budget, we're on two percent increases, so I think. You still like last year, like fifty thousand dollars for hard coughing, that's like all that stuff for maintenance is still, uh, included, like any. Materials or the contract made services.
Yeah.
Uh, so some of those items, I think, can be addressed by what we have built into our operations budgets.
We are looking towards an increase in taxation of nineteen percent and that for the capital cost of roads. Eighteen point nine point five.
So, so yeah, not, like, yeah, so the, the growth department budget is increasing by that, but. It, again, reflects overall to four point nine, you know, everything else, but, um, just five percent. It can be hundred of percentages, because the net capital goes up to fifteen, but then the department all goes up nineteen, so. Sometimes the percentages seem a little bit more scarier than, than what they actually are, but. Fair point, the, the point of numbers.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? So is the direction moving towards continuing with what has been laid out in this plan?
I think you should.
Councillor Holton?
Yeah, I think, could I maybe like revisit this at our next budget meeting, just quickly, uh, if we have a. More of a handle on what per kilometer costs are for line painting and some of that, we can, but. Otherwise, I think. We're gonna get the roads fixed, we just keep going behind if we don't do anything on.
Councillor Javonki?
Thank you, I'm gonna see contention with everybody mentioned, oh, painting. Having all things right and blind, I says, councillor Holton says, let's get, get the roads done. At least get ahead, next council to take over the smaller ones finishing.
Councillor Saunders?
Hey, Madam Mayor. I guess in overall, um. We all, especially you guys have a lot of gravel roads, so how do you decide which roads are gonna be done, which roads are gonna stay where they are, so. Good luck on that. I support one of the need, you have one.
Councillor Ackerman?
We can't move forward without moving forward.
Okay. And the good news is, we had a roads needs assessment that actually is actually quite detailed when you look at the appendix as to what priority we should be getting. It's a recommendation, it's not mandatory, but it's an engineer's recommendation, you pay good attention to it and building will plan that is sustainable. But then. Without breaking the buck. Okay?
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll continue on for the next department. Um, so we have wool waste. Um, again, uh, if here, um, we don't have too much of a. Change on the, uh, operating side, I'll just go through the changes overall to zero point three percent increase. Um, yeah, so just looking there, um. Contracted services, uh, the increase there is, um, for new consultants with the most waste sites. Um, there's been a, a slight increase to kind of cover the cost, just because we've seen a little bit of a trend upwards, a little bit of a head inflation. Um, and then the user charge is just what we brought in the revenue, um, that increase is just to be more aligned with the actions. Um, with the waste, we have recycling, so we have a bit more change on recycling department. Um, the biggest change here, there's, uh, no longer any government funding, um. It's going in twenty twenty-six, uh, we, uh, have in place that, uh, we will be operating the depot on behalf of circle materials. Uh, just to kind of get into how that impacts the budget. Um, uh, again, uh, government transfers decrease. Um, there's a decrease in the payment received by circle materials, so I guess to explain this is. Um, last year, the agreement was signed, uh, there was a six months agreement between us and circle materials for July first, twenty twenty-five to December the first. Um, coming back, uh, you know, there'd be agreements that could concern beyond the twenty twenty, uh, sixth. Um, so the payment has decreased, I, I will say, I think I mentioned it last year, the payment that we're working for the six months, uh, I didn't know it was kind of high. Um, you know, it was, the money that we're receiving is probably kind of more than we're expecting. Uh, the decrease in circle materials, they kind of probably be more aligned with our actual costs. Um, the, I think the point to get here that is also very important, the revenue's decreasing, um, but the contracted services what used to cost us. And how it's been, and they picked off island, um, is also decreasing by forty-eight thousand dollars. Um, just to go back to the, the main something tab. Um, although the revenue's decreasing, the decrease in our, uh, operating expenditures outweighs that. Um, ultimately, at the end of the day, it's a ninety-two hundred dollar decrease for the budget. Uh, so again, I know kind of some of the pieces there, I have concerning questions. Um, high level though, if we look at the department to offer recycling for households on Wolf Island. Um, it costs less time to do so or less taxes this year from twenty-six than it did for twenty twenty-five. Everyone's good, I'll continue on to the next department. Um, secret housing, uh, again, uh. We're ultimately seeing a decrease for this budget, so on this one goes through and talk about, uh, the more cementing items. Um, the first one is the increase due to rent of being a turnover. Um, again, uh, for any units, uh, that people are residing, it is rent control, so. Um, we are limited what the annual increases are, it's usually around two percent. Um, but, uh, as early in the year, if we have a need in turnover, uh, council gave approval to increase the rent charge to be able to cover the ongoing costs. Um, and we're seeing just some of that impact for twenty twenty-six, uh, here, uh, as we've one posted, uh, turnover at a higher rate. Um, for contracting services, um. Uh, we had, uh, a decreasing building insurance that was offset by some inflationary increases. Um, the one we've seen here is financial offense, so, uh, this one kind of gets into the nitty-gritty of property taxation. Um, so normally, even if a valley owns a property, it's tax exempt or it has, you know, an exempt, uh, property value. Um, there is a caveat that if the property has people living there, they would normally pay property taxes, so for example, if they're resident in the household. Um, then the property is no longer tax exempt. Um, basically from an accounting exercise, all this means is. It's part of the assessment role and it's using top of the tax rate, so it's bringing in revenue and now in the department, we just record the expense. Um, we're obviously not gonna pay ourselves, but those two amounts kind of net up and cancel each other. Um, the issue in the past is we weren't budgeting for property taxes, um, so we weren't capturing, uh, enough revenue to cover it. Um, the issue in the past is we weren't budgeting for property taxes, um, so we weren't capturing uh, enough revenue to cover it. Again, convoluted short story is, it just kind of makes sense, but it needs to be included. Um, there was a seven hundred and fourteen dollar decrease in interest expenditure. Um, again, every year that we're gonna be seeing the loan decrease, as we pay off more of the loan for senior apartment, uh, the interest we pay decreases as well. Um, for the reserve transfer, we have a thirty-four thousand dollar decrease. Um, so uh, basically here. Um, we have uh, the fourteen thousand dollars added to the shorewell, um, and then there was an additional twenty thousand dollars uh, for the department uh, for uh, costing generator. Um, this year, again, this new change on council directions, uh, what I did, um, with the reserve transfers, if you look at the next slide. Um, historically in the past, we had a reserve transfer from reserves uh, to cover the loan payment. So this year, as I've seen before, um, we're not transferring to reserves, but we're also not taking anything out of. Out of the loan, um, and this cannot allow this loan to be funded by taxation going forward. Um, which, again, we don't have enough money to set up the fund for long payment, that's why I'm commenting on those files. Uh, if there's any questions?
Council Halt?
No question.
Council DeBlonikis?
No.
Council Saunders?
Thank you, Madam. So. Uh, we got more to this place on twenty forty-five.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any opportunity to, um, I guess? What, what's, what are we paying in terms of interest, what's the interest charge, and is there any opportunity to prepay that given the asset reserves?
Uh, three, Madam Mayor, so I think the interest, um, for twenty twenty-six is gonna be around fourteen thousand dollars.
Sorry, percentage, okay.
Oh, the percentage, uh, I have to look, I don't have a rate to my head, but. Um, it, it is something, you know, obviously, we wanted to put the funds towards it, but you paid off early, you paid off interest. Um, I could do the analysis of that. I, I guess for me, I don't know what would be the, the funding source to use to pay it off, um, and what would make sense from that perspective.
I mean, what's, what's the balance I want on?
Uh, yeah, so I'm just gonna. I didn't include in the slides, uh. I can provide the number next time, sorry, I do actually have a graphic, I just didn't include, but. Um. The logo's only about a decade old, and we have another, you know, twenty years ago, so. I have classes definitely still sufficient balance.
Do you know what her payment is per month?
So the payment is, it's twenty-eight thousand dollars of principal a year, um. The uh, payments are done, uh, I believe biannually, there's two payments, and then uh, about fourteen thousand dollars in interest.
Okay. Now. You mentioned briefly the generator and that. We haven't purchased the generator for that.
No, that's what I'm gonna. Just transferred.
Okay, so we've covered up, you know, twenty thousand. That's one big double check on.
Yeah. So, so last year, there was uh. Twenty thousand from the emergency management, and about twenty thousand from the. The senior project.
So. Next year, we'll probably have enough to get to the funding purchasing a generator for that.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, that could be uh, something to, to look at.
Okay.
Hey, um, moving on to CCB, um, again, just for constant mistakes I have there, but I have a brackets community center to make it clear to everyone what this department is. Um, uh, just kind of get right into what the changes are. Um, so, uh, for the revenues, we did factor in a little bit of an increase, um, we saw overall higher programming revenue come in. Um, as well as last year, the uh, arena was drafted for, I believe, a couple events and a wedding. Um, so again, we're not banking on that we'll have as many, but we're just trying to build in some of that increase into the budget, um, just to kind of reflect what we did see in twenty twenty-five. Um. So the decreasing salary benefits, so. Um, with this one, uh, this is kind of just more of alignment of the amount of staffing, so. Um, this decrease is really just to be aligned with our staffing needs that we had in twenty twenty-five. We found that what's budgeted in twenty twenty-six uh, was a bit higher than what's actually needed for the department. Um, with that being said, there's no service changes from twenty-six compared to what we, uh, available twenty twenty-five. Um, so residents should be able to expect the same hours and kind of the maintenance that we have there previously. Um, contracted uh, services, so we have increased for the amount and budget for insurance. Uh, again, part of this is just our annual increase, uh, as well as, again, looking at insurance, making sure that kind of the correct amount is allocated to the correct departments. Um, the reserve transfer last year, uh, the community, um, or the community center also had the fourteen thousand dollar transfer for the shorewell, uh, which is on present in the twenty twenty-six budget. Um, again, overall, on the operating side. Um, because of that increase in uh, the reserve transfer, uh, we're ultimately looking at net operating, uh, decrease. Um, moving on just to the travel portion. Um, so as I kind of mentioned earlier, in the locatory reserve tab, we have partner reserve funds. Um, so just for some context for this, uh. Um, we collect the funds every year, uh, the township is required to allocate sixty percent of them to a project. Uh, so if we collect the funds this year, they don't need to be spent, but by the end of next year, you have to allocate to spend sixty percent of them. Um, working with this, this is management staff who also consulted in. Um, just the informal rec committee, just as they help us volunteer, and they know the space. Uh, what we're proposing to be covered by those partner reserve charges is, is uh, the west wall project. Uh, from my understanding, it may be constructing a wall on the west side, uh, which would provide better, uh, better coverage for wind inside the community center. Um, and then improve the enjoyment and use of it for uh, anyone that takes advantage of the community center, uh, arena. And that covers it.
All right, Council Holden?
No question.
Me. Council DeBlonikis?
No questions.
Council Saunders?
I think in a nurse.
Council Ackley?
No comment.
Is it? Okay, what about the lights?
So, three, Madam Mayor, um, I did inquire, uh, about, because they changed the light bulbs and had a pretty high cost. Um, based on my discussions with our staff, uh, we looked at the lights and none are needed to be replaced with the balls. Um, so uh, that's why, uh, when we're looking at what kind of projects to use the funds for, we went with this as well. Again, I'm not as kind of familiar with community history, but I, I do believe this is something people have been asking for for a while with the arena, um, and we thought the parkland reserve. Funds were a good way to kind of get that.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to the use, using the parkland funds and that, and I'm just thinking that this past year, we were hit with a surprise bill for lights that were identified as being outdated and. Consuming more electricity than was needed at this time of time, so I'm asking.
Yes.
When is some, the upgrade of lights for the. Multiple baseball grounds going to occur? Almost?
Yeah, well, last year, they upgraded. The one and the other guy that was done. Six years ago, eight, eight years ago.
Yeah.
Not gonna get him a big one, well, okay, okay.
You're good there.
Thank you.
Three, Madam Mayor, this allocation is mostly for those collected in twenty twenty-four, uh, so we do actually have some remaining parkland reserves to try to help us, again, we have a situation with the lights. Uh, you know, those, those ones are harder to budget for, but we, we do have a little bit, uh, something else to work with that we need to.
Did we pull up the parkland reserves to pay for those lights?
Uh, three, Madam Mayor, no, no, we didn't for those ones, um, but it is something we have going forward.
Good, thank you.
Well, thank you. Um, so, believe it or not, we're at the end for the Wolf Island slides, um, culture is out here again. Um, what only really needs to be discussed, if you remember, uh, Kate came forward at our last council meeting with proposal to add. Uh, a part-time worker to set up a co-op for the Wolf Island businesses. Uh, so that has included the budget, which is why we see the fifteen thousand dollar increase for salary benefits. Um, sorry, on quick side revenue, we uh, just budgeted for the rental of this space, just make sure I was aligned. Um, I guess, so getting back to salary benefits. Um, we calculated about eleven thousand five hundred and fifty-four dollars. Uh, to hire a temporary part-time coordinator, this would be eight hours a week.
I'm just gonna have to interrupt you for a second, we just hit the three hour mark, and I had a motion that we extend this meeting for another. Up to now.
Fifteen minutes to get on the last slide.
This is pretty easy.
Almost.
We're not, it's a clip, so.
Yeah, we're not doing that.
The council, so.
One take, well, thirty minutes, and I hope we'll be done a lot quicker than that motion.
So, if, if I may, Madam Mayor, moved by Deputy Mayor Flaherty, speaking by Council Holt, and that council extended special meaning of council hold on November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, beyond one P M, but not beyond one thirty.
All those in favor? Carrie.
No, I think you're right, I appreciate it, um, so again, just to kind of summarize, uh, this would be eight hours of, for forty-four weeks. Um, staff didn't look at whether we could handle it internally. Um, ultimately, uh, we made the decision, uh, that. Uh, losing, you know, staff member one out of the five days of twenty percent. Um, this wasn't, uh, will be really the best use of that staff member's time. So we have included the whole, uh, the co-op. Um, the other pieces as well, um. Going back, uh, there was a. Um, oh, the other piece with this, we have usually new hires, we purchase new uh, laptops, uh, computer hardware. Uh, for this employee, uh, because it all be temporary, uh, we've not budgeted any increased materials, we have some older stuff that we may use, or may do, just because it'd be a temporary composition.
Excellent. Okay, Council Holden?
I'm not a favorite of that hire at all, I, I. I think it's too soon, as I've mentioned in the meeting, now it appears that some volunteers could burn out quicker than others. But, um, I think there's plenty of talent, I, I, I don't know, if you went and asked for them for one day a week, retired people might like to fill that position. I just don't feel that as a township, it's something we need to be into at this time.
Okay. Council DeBlonikis?
Thanks, Madam, I started to say commas, it's council hall. We need an extra person again.
Okay, Council Saunders?
Thank you, Madam, uh, as you all may know, I'm very pro business. I think a vibrant municipality has to have a strong commercial base to it, and I think we have that. Uh, the opportunity for that here in Marysville. What I struggle with is, um, why township will take the full brunt of that? There must be grants out there that consist of this. So, and principle, I agree with it, but I think there's practical aspects that need to be addressed first of all. Um. We, we will have a fairer situation to address at some point in the future, hopefully before I die. And that provide, which may, that long, would be provide more opportunity to them in the business for, uh, for Maryville and the other. So I think it's a great idea, I just don't know how we can execute it without some. Volunteers or additional funding or something like that, so. Just coming back to the group to explore, I guess, explore other. Means with some support or some kinds.
Council Ackley?
Again, I don't know why the businesses aren't popping up a sheer, a portion of that, you know, and there's lots of volunteers out there, like. I think it's, uh, Margaret DeRoche, she puts stuff on Facebook about. Everything on this island. And, you know, I, I read it. Some's good, some's bad, same with us, some's good, some's bad, but she's volunteering. You know, she's putting her time in every day, because that doesn't happen in two minutes, some of the stuff she puts up there. But, uh, you know, I, I think the businesses should be kicking impartial. Towards this, because it's gonna promote them too.
Okay. Um, I. Had made mention before, I thought that we should be providing some in-kind support, and that we had expanded the administrative support of this municipality. Substantively. With the idea of getting both quality of work, but also support for the community and that, and to me. This is something, uh. Freement, getting their articles of incorporation, that's an area of expertise, it should be. Not too, too time consuming that, uh, a system to get it done. One thing that caught my attention is if they, the informed issue indicated as a co-op, is it a not-for-profit co-op? As if it's a not-for-profit co-op, sometime in the future, when, uh, council. Decides to go towards MAP taxes, which is municipal accommodation taxes, fifty percent of that funds can go towards a group like that as a not-for-profit. That is actually advocating and promoting this community, while the remaining fifty percent that the township would have would be also in support. Of facilities, whether it's bathrooms or bike lanes or anything else now. So, that's why I really thought that we should be able to provide some in-kind. And I ask specifically in that, uh, at the county level, and the qualification is the not-for-profit aspect is important. For them to get set up, and I have no idea whether they're gonna go upward or be pro or not for profit, so. I still have my same concern, I still think they should get support from both. The council, but as an income. It doesn't sound like it's supported for that funding. In this budget, that doesn't. Stop them from applying. For, uh, a student. And that, and certain criteria down, it's an academic student from. Queens or St. Lawrence and that, that has business and that, that might be able to help them flow through that way, but I really think. It's not a rule there, I promise that we're not for this. So I'm getting some head nodding, I'll do an informal poll, and I'm on the right path that there, we're not supportive of hiring this student for. This group.
Yes, I'm not supportive.
Okay, Council DeBlonikis?
Take it.
Not very supportive, no.
Okay, Council Saunders?
I'm not banking on them, they're supportive of hiring.
Okay, it's Council Ackley. I'm not, I think we got directions on that one, as you'll say. Okay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, so. Um, that brings us to the end of the Wolf Island, uh, department. Um, so the plan is, uh, we'll pick up the exact presentation next week on How Island and do the How Island slides. Um, there's also some slides at the end that we can discuss next week, I think, not included in the budget that, uh, staff has identified. Um, but that makes more sense kind of once we get through everything we have. Um, so other than that, I will take your direction today, and the direction gets next week, and then at December fifth, also, we will re-present an amended budget based on council's direction.
Okay, would there be any doubts or going to, at a high level, at How Island, so that if there's anything blurry, the next meeting, you would, then there's response to this? If we have a half hour, that is.
Wouldn't result.
Thanks. Sorry, through you, Madam Mayor, we also have a closed session that we have to.
I thought someone pays up the fees.
Yeah.
Okay. You'll have less time to think, we, we.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, it's.
Thank you.
Uh, before we go, moved by Deputy Mayor Saunders, second by Council Holton, that council adjourned. Nope, not that one, sorry. Moved by Council DeBlonikis, second by Council Ackley, that council adjourned to form council in closed session regarding the municipal section two-three-nine C. A proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land by the municipality or local board. More specifically, a matter pertaining to negotiations involving a transportation status.
Okay, all those in favor? Carrie. One in the closed session now, one.
There we go. Uh, thank you, so, uh, my next motion is moved by Council Ackley, second by Deputy Mayor Saunders, that three readings of final passage be granted to bylaw number. Zero-three-two dash twenty twenty-five, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council.
We have said one-third follow directions is discussed in close.
I don't have one for that, um, bear with me two seconds. Get it. Uh, moved by Deputy Mayor Saunders, second by Council DeBlonikis, that council directs staff to proceed as directed, as per, uh, as per discussion in closed session.
Sessions? All those in favor? Carrie. Now the bylaw number zero-three-two dash twenty twenty-five, confirmation bylaw.
Moved by Council Ackley, second by Deputy Mayor Saunders, that three readings of final passage be granted to bylaw zero-three-two dash twenty twenty-five, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings. Being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council.
Discussion, all of them in favor? Carry. Now, the insurance, uh.
Moved by Council Holton, second by Council Jevoniki, that the special meeting held November twenty fourth, twenty twenty five adjourned.
All those in favor? Carry.